I'm going to call our meeting to order. Good evening. Today is Wednesday, April 26, 2023. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education Monthly Meeting. I'd like us all to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance first.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Present.
Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Bierman?
Here.
Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Gerbi?
Here.
Mr. Tufano?
Here.
We have a quorum. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published an electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted, April 14th, 2023, at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the Clerk of the municipality.
Thank you. Next item is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975, NJSA 10:4-6 through 10:4-21, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying; matters protected by attorney-client privilege; MTEA Level III grievance; confidential personnel matters with the understanding that only employees who have already received a RICE notice will be discussed; collective negotiations. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll be in our closed session and we will come back out and resume our public meeting at 7:15. Thank you. Good evening. We are moving back into our public portion of our meeting. The next item on our agenda is our approval of our minutes. The first one on the agenda is the Public Board of Education meeting, March 15th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? Corrections? All right, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions or recusals? Okay. Our next one is the Closed Session Meeting, March 15th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Any recusals or abstentions?
Um, recusal, abstention on matters pertaining to conflict issues.
Okay. The next one is a Special Public Board of Education meeting, March 29th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any recusals or abstentions? Okay. The last one is the Closed Session Meeting, March 29th, 2023. Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Any questions? Comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Ms. Bierman opposed. Any recusals or abstentions?
Recusal pertaining to conflict.
Recusals also pertaining to conflict.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members' Report. We have our student board member, Hetvee Daka, here with us this evening. Welcome. Would you like to give your report?
Of course. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to start off with Oak Tree. So Oak Tree celebrated autism awareness during the week of April 10th. Students learned about what autism is through a variety of activities. The school was also able to shine light on what makes each of us special through fun events like Flashlight Friday and Lava Yourself Day. Third-grade Lego creations are being featured in Oak Tree's front foyer showcases. Oak Tree is excited to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week from May 8th to 12th. Uh, the school's NJSLA testing will begin on May 1st for third-grade students. On Thursday, April 13th, the school's library team, Ms. Borquist and Mrs. Butkovich facilitated an outstanding author's visit by Alan Kratz. The students and staff were overjoyed by his presentation. On Tuesday, April 18th, Mill Lake hosted a Unified Gym Period with MTHS. As always, both the students and staff had an amazing time. On Thursday, April 20th, Mrs. de Blasio's and Mrs. Sepharati's preschool PM class participated in a parent-child yoga class sponsored by a very generous parent, Kaitlyn Farrarian. This week will be a busy one for all elementary schools as they support Monroe Township Police Chapter 10 Unity Tour Day with the Pachama Day on Thursday, April 26th. Mill Lake will celebrate Bring Your Child to Work Day with 44 staff members, children participating in an adventurous scavenger hunt activity, and lunch with the principal. Next month brings many exciting events, including the school's Unified Field Day at the high school, and a Mill Lake Field Day, the Mill Lake Woodland Variety Show, and many, many more fun activities. Moving on to AppleGarth. AppleGarth has been very busy this April. The school has started a series of coding activities after school in collaboration with a group of high school students who are experienced coders. Through the month of March, Mrs. Fleischer and Mrs. Eberhard, the school's PE teachers, created teams of students who researched college around the United States. Those teams competed in a month of April in a bracketed March Madness tournament. There were some incredibly passionate competitions. The student council helped to run the event by keeping score. March Madness was run in conjunction with the Spring Food Drive. The class that brought in the most food at each grade level earned a few bonus points, bonus starting points in the tournament. The school's PTA brought an amazing assembly this April. BMX bikers performed jaw-dropping tricks, even jumping over our teachers on their bicycles. Students loved this assembly, which also contained a message of avoiding substance abuse. AppleGarth encourages all students to be everyday people of character and to be inclusive to all. During the week of April 17th to 21st, the school celebrated the annual AppleGarth is a diverse universe week. In addition to the educational classroom activities and videos that encourage diversity, the school had guest readers and adults with exceptionalities to come to our school and share the stories of inclusion with students. Students used sidewalk chalk to draw symbols of inclusivity, and as a culminating activity, the whole school joined together in the hallways to sing "You Got a Friend in Me." On April 26th, AppleGarth will host its annual NJ Math League competition. Lastly, in the month of April, AppleGarth celebrated some of the incredible staff members on Paraprofessional Appreciation Day and School Librarian Appreciation Day. Next up are Barclay Brook. Barclay Brook and Brookside students were treated to an exciting assembly in March entitled Kindness Quest. The interactive assembly focused on promoting care and kindness through a laser adventure that explored community and friendship. The students loved the optical illusions, special effects, and popular music featured throughout the production. Barclay Brook held its annual United Safari Night on Thursday, April 20th. Students had so much fun completing different safari-themed activities with their unified partners. At Barclay Brook, the school emphasizes the importance of social and emotional learning in all aspects of the day. Classroom teachers and special area teachers were asked to identify one student from their class who consistently demonstrated great behavior during the second trimester. Barclay Brook had an assembly before the spring break where the great winners were announced and honored. One of the most wonderful aspects of the assembly was the way in which all the students cheered for and celebrated the great kid winners. They were truly excited for their classmates who were nominated, which reinforced that all students are truly great kids. For Brookside, uh, when March Madness for basketball began, Brookside had their own March Book Madness. The school started with 16 books, and by student votes, the books were eliminated. They started with 16, then to 8, then 4, and then 2, and finally found a champion. The winning book was What If Pig? Fourth grade had a Lenape speaker talk to the students for their Native American study. The students had a hands-on experience with Lenape artifacts. He passed around tools, clothing, and a game that the Lenape used on a daily basis. The students enjoyed learning about the Lenape tribe. The students at Brookside reached a goal of 500 feathers as a part of the Character Reward Program, which feathers are earned when classes demonstrate positive behavior and good character. As a school, when earning 500 feathers, Brookside students enjoyed a dance party. The students had a lot of fun in their classrooms as they danced. For Woodland, during Valentine's Day, student council sponsored several activities. One was to guess the number of cookies and, to guess the number of chocolate kisses in a jar. The winner, Tarek Sharma, had the opportunity to pick a School-Wide Spirit Day. Fourth and fifth graders had the opportunity to participate in the Math League contest. It is a friendly competition, and the top winners are, win a math book. Ms. Hyer and Mrs. Duskovich are coordinating a makerspace project to write a haiku poem on square paper and fold it into origami. This project is based on a book entitled Fold Me a Poem, written by Kristen O'Connell George. Students are donating $1 to wear PJs to support the Monroe Township Police Department Unity Tour. Grade 5 students are invited to the middle school to preview their upcoming musical, Disney's Descendants. It also gave them the opportunity to become acquainted with the middle school students as they begin to transition to the middle school to the next year. On Saturday, April 22nd, Monroe District students participated in the 2023 Elementary Honors Band Festival. Students from all across central New Jersey were nominated, and there were seven Woodland students who participated. For MTMS, April 24th, MTMS hosted Woodland Elementary School at a preview of the MTMS play Disney's Descendants. On April 25th, MTMS hosted eighth graders from Jamesburg to participate with our, with the school's eighth graders at the school-wide health fair. Mrs. Chanley, as well as the principal of GMB Middle School in Jamesburg, attended. Over 20 MTMS students who were accepted and participated in the 2023 Elementary Honors Band Festival on Saturday, April 22nd. These students learned and performed new music in a concert during a single day of rehearsal. MTMS will be hosting its annual 7th and 8th grade play, Disney's Descendants, on May 4th, 5th, and 6th. The school looks forward to a large crowd to enjoy the talented students. Moving on to the high school. The high school will be hosting an SAT on May 6th in order to provide the opportunity for students to prepare for college through testing. From May 2nd to 13th, the high school will be holding advanced placement testing, providing students the opportunity to receive college credit for classes taken in high school. May 9th will be the upcoming National Arts Honor Society induction ceremony. Tomorrow, April 27th, is the opening night of MTHS Footlights Musical, Mean Girls. Stop by to view the show from Thursday to Saturday at 7:00 PM, with tickets for students and seniors being $8 and tickets for adults being $10. So be sure to stop by and see another fantastic performance from the high school's Footlights Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to give you a round of applause. Thank you so much for giving the update for the entire district. We really appreciate hearing all of the information that you bring here. So thank you very much for that. The next item on our agenda is our presentations this evening. We have two. Our first one is our Student and Staff Recognition Presentation. Very excited to do this as every year, at this time of the year, we, at each of our meetings, we start recognizing staff members and student achievement. And this evening, we have our Student and Staff Achievement Recognition Presentation. Mrs. Chanley, I think is going to lead that along with Dr. Lehman and Mr. Maraldo.
So before we get up and stand before you, so we can acknowledge your children, I want to take this opportunity to welcome all of our parents and grandparents, aunts or uncles, brothers and sisters that are here this evening. This is really what it's about. This Board of Education meeting this evening is the beginning of what will continue through May as well as June with recognition of our children. We come here every day to do what is very best for the students of Monroe Township, and it is beyond an honor and a privilege to be able to be the superintendent while we get to acknowledge your children's value. And that value comes in so many ways. Just being good citizens, being kind to others, and then, of course, reaching and exceeding their potential and your expectations as well as ours. So with no further ado, I would like to thank our staff, because there is no question that all of these accolades and all of these acknowledgements come directly because we have an incredible staff, which includes our fabulous teachers, I know they're here this evening, our fantastic teachers, our fantastic supervisors, administrators, everyone. Nice round of applause. So we're going to begin the acknowledgement by going over, and we have Dr. Rozell up first, and if I can ask our President, Vice President, and Dr. Lehman to join us, that would be fabulous.
This evening, I have the honor of presenting our students who have earned the Seal of Biliteracy. For those who may not be familiar, the Seal of Biliteracy is earned by students who demonstrate proficiency, both in English and a second language. It may be a language that they've studied here in Monroe, a heritage language they grew up speaking with family and friends, or a native language that was their first language before they learned English. Our first recipient, Vanessa Aguilar Diaz. Kristin Alvarez Aldway. Faison Ayub. Emily Bai. Jair Bacadano. Nancy Vernal Ramirez. Sophia Brennan. Anshul Chandalia. Yash Chanawar. Rebecca Chin. Alison Chinchilla Galvane. Lara Costa. Nishi Desai. Scarlett Espinal. Maya Govindu. Sonia Harjani. Ruchi Caps. Gabriel Kalmanzki. Alexandra Marquez Carrasco. Piyali Mittal. Aritzi Moran Karo. Yashwan Mupidi. Caesar Moscaratolo. Ritten Kumar Patel. Domenica Patino. Priyanka Raganath. Philip Ragolato. Rachel Rodriguez. Hersh Shah. Brianna Sochi. Adithi Shriganesh. And Ryan Jahindani.
Good evening, everyone. The Spanish National Honor Society is advised by Señora Natasha Karenante, and this award is the Birdie Green Junior Travel Award. It's a highly competitive award that is, basically gives a scholarship to a member of the Spanish National Honor Society. It's an all-expensive pay trip to Costa Rica to further learning of Spanish language as well as Costa Rican culture. Nationally, there's only about 20 Spanish Honor Society members that are awarded with this. We submit worthy applicants every year, and in the past, we've only had one win. So this year, we have a second. I'd like to present Rui Kilcarney as the winner of the Birdie Green Junior Travel Award. Next, we have the Latin National Honor Society. That is advised by Dr. Michael Merson. These four students place first on the National Latin Exam. They are Nirne Badacharya. Pernida Vishnabhata. Devon Patel. And Anish Korapati. These students place first on the National Classical Etymology Exam. They are Vasch Sanan. Anish Korapati. Ashika Chin Tharpali. Abanav Sam Venkata. Justin Goetz. Akash Talori. Arjun Bijju. And Nikhil Thomala. The following students place first on the National Roman Civilization Exam. All of these exams, by the way, were given at Princeton University, and really, this is our first year that we're participating in this, and Dr. Merson and the kids did a fantastic job, as evidenced by all these awards. First, we have Anish Korapati. Abanav Sam Venkata. Anan Suryan Ariyanian. Rehan Borha. Justin Goetz. Dakshil Sahini. Piyali Shah. Ashna Srivastava. And last but not least, Akash Talori. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Sharon DiMarco, English teacher at MTHS.
Good evening. Monroe Township High School's National English Honor Society would like to recognize several of its members on their achievement of the Sigma Tau Delta Scholarship Essay Award in this year's national competition. The Sigma Tau Delta Award is given to the best crafted essays written by graduating seniors who will be attending a two-to-four-year college. From thousands of writers across the country, we are so proud to acknowledge that three of our graduating seniors won this year's National Sigma Tau Delta Scholarship Essay Contest, and we'd like to recognize them tonight. When I call your name, please come forward. Ria Karnik. Priyanka Ranganath. Sameer Varma. On behalf of Monroe Township High School's chapter of the National English Honor Society, please join me in congratulating Ria, Sameer, and Priyanka on their exciting achievement.
Hello again. These awards are going to our Model UN students. Model UN is advised by Mr. Joe Romano. Joe has been advising this club since 2007, and every year, he and the kids do a fantastic job. I'd like to recognize first, students who are elected chairpersons for the 2024 conference. First, Vikram Ranganagov. Rui Kilcarney. Pragati Mahesh. Anoki Patel. Hetvee Taker. And Trisha Goli. These two students were awarded Premier First Year Delegate, which is also a fantastic award. Arushi Chintakalala. And Matthew Basili. And these two students were awarded Outstanding Country. Shreemay Chen Napparaga. And Ragav Gupta. This last slide deals with winners of the Conference on National Affairs. Again, this is a very prestigious award, and we have three this year at Monroe Township High School. First, Hetvee Taker. Anyrana. And Rui Kilcarney. This slide is for the American Legion Oratorical Competition. That is advised by Mr. Chris Thumb. Again, Mr. Chris Thumb has also advised this club since 2007. This is one of the clubs that we work with in the community with the American Legion, which has a branch right here in town. So our veterans come in and basically help the kids and listen to the kids give speeches with regard to the United States Constitution. So very important stuff, very cool stuff. The winner of our MTH, I'm sorry, our MTHS competition is, again, Rui Kilcarney. And the winner of the Middlesex County Competition is Kassar Sheik.
Good evening. I'm the fortunate principal of the middle school. I am lucky enough to come every day and work with all of your students, as well as the rest of the student body who make me proud every day, as well as the staff that works with them. So I thank not only the students, but the staff for all their hard work. So we are going to start with, I don't know if I should wear my glasses or not, because I can't see either way. Thank you. My readers aren't working today. So we had a lot of success with our history So we had a lot of success with our History B, directed by Ms. Sarah Ponsini, one of our seventh-grade social studies teachers. All four of these students qualified for Nationals in June. And as I read their name, I will tell you what place they got in Regionals, so they got the proper recognition. So I would like to start with Kevin Yovan, Faisal Jabair. Faisal got first place in the Regionals, thank you. And Kevin got fourth in the Regionals. And we will now move to Luke DeBrito, who qualified for Nationals with a fourth place in Regionals. And then we will move to Venkate Vihan Yalalori, who placed eighth in Regionals and also qualified for Nationals in June. Moving on to our ELA in the Scripps Spelling Bee, we have Yahasra Friheru, who was a school champion and a regional qualifier in the Scripps Spelling Bee. In our Geography Bee, once again, organized by Ms. Sarah Ponsini and led by Ms. Sarah Ponsini, we had the success similar to that of the History Bee. We had all of these students qualify for Nationals, and I will give you their place as we go through their names. So once again, Kevin Yovan placed third in Regionals. Faisal Jabair, third in Regionals also. Luke DeBrito, second in Regionals. Rittik Thukro, placed ninth in Regionals. Sure. And we have Arjan Bura, who placed eighth in Regionals in the Geography Bee, also qualifying for Nationals in June. In our Science Bee, we had three students, again, very successful in the Regionals, qualifying for Nationals in June. We have Luke DeBrito, who scored second place in the Regionals. We have Arav Thakkar, who placed fifth in Regionals. And we have Vihan Valavallari, who placed third in Regionals. Sticking with Science in the Science Olympia 2023, Ms. Nicole Gurgis and Ms. Melissa Calentino were the teachers organizing this. We had Neev Kadari, first place in Can't Judge a Powder Event. Sophia Ferrios, also first place in Can't Judge a Powder Event. Neev Kadari, come on back, because you also placed second in Bio Process Lab Event. Rithika Lanka, second place in Bio Process Lab Event. Caitlin Wong, third place in Write It, Do It Event. And Ashani Sahu, third place in Write It, Do It Event. In our Math Counts 2023 Competition, organized by Ms. Amanda Solomon and Ashley Digo Van Angel. Digo Van Angel. We have Aditya Jagafgar, ranked 22 out of 188 in Chapter Competition, 34th out of 69th in the New York State Competition. And that is the middle school.
Hello, everyone, again. These awards are for our DECA club here at the school. DECA is advised by Ms. Alana Seid and Ms. Alexa Marshall. They cannot be here tonight because they're currently at a competition. So we'll see if any of these students are actually here. I'm hoping they are. Rahil Parikh. Oh, I'm sorry. All of these students are finalists for the DECA International Conference. Anshul Chandalalia. Daniel Vergesi. Neil Shah. Renya Patel. And Rohan Singh. Well, we're going to wish them good luck, because they're probably... Most of them are probably competing right now. At this time, I'd like to introduce Brian Keough and Ms. Jen? Oh, Jen? Oh, what's... Oh, my God. What's your last name again? Solomon, that's right. And she just got married, so let's give her a round of applause. We are the Future Business Leaders of America Advisors. Our club is about raising awareness of business and to create the next business leaders of tomorrow, while also tempering it with a love of community service and philanthropy. The individuals we would like to recognize tonight competed in our state competition in March, and they received awards in varying areas, being the eclectic individuals they are, for areas in community service, scholarships, and membership service to FBLA.
So we first have, in first place for FBLAs, Hoo Hoo Naraini Etichuni. In first place in her competition of Human Resource Management, Rebecca Chin. For placing first place in her competition of Help Desk, Samya Gupta. Placing first place in his event, Human Resource Insurance and Risk Management, Ishaa Kadhan. These three individuals as a team also placed first in their event Hospitality and Event Management. We have Simran Dash Prombu, Pranasa Gordi, and Aditi Reggi. These students as a team also placed first in their event Banking and Financial Systems, Ashika Chinaparthi, and Anoki Patel. This member received the Gold Member Award at our SLC, Faisal Ayub.
Our next member received the Gold Officer Award, Reyna Patel. I forgot one member of DECA, and this student achieved something very cool. He was elected by his peers as the Central Regional Vice President. Let's hear it for Jay Patel. At this time, I would like to ask Ms. Sharon DiMarco to come back up.
The Honors, STEM, and Business Academy is designed to prepare high school students for a competitive college education by offering a rigorous program of honors and AP courses for students who have a definitive interest in science, technology, engineering, math, or business. Two highlights of the program include curating a digital portfolio of artifacts, from essays to lab reports, that tell the digital story of their educational journey. The newest feature of the program is the Capstone Series, the two electives known as AP Seminar and AP Research. In this program, students collaboratively and independently research solutions for real-world issues, from ethics to environment, citing and showing responsibility with scholarly sources, using our databases EBSCO and JSTOR and many, many more. The students present their work to the academy in essay and also oral presentation formats. The following 11 seniors have completed their three-year Honors, STEM Academy program with Capstone projects as part of the two-year AP Capstone experience and are eligible for their AP Seminar and AP Research Certificate, as well as the AP Capstone Diploma. On behalf of the Honors, STEM, and Business Academy, we would like to recognize these 11 graduating seniors. When your name is called, please come up. Anvita Arjula. Her topic: The Depreciation of Memory in Adolescents. She researched about the Google Effect and the way in which often, when we Google things, we don't always remember what we learned. Ask her about it. Anvita. Seeing none. Next, Nishi Desai. Nishi Desai researched independent reading and its impact on self-motivated reading in adolescence. Ria Karnik. Ria Karnik studied nature and nurture and its effects on adolescents. Krish Kanna. Krish researched adolescent views on nutrition. His research question: Does a noticeable change in student participation in lunches influence adolescent choices? Round of applause for Krish. Saketh Kodavanti. Saketh researched the effective rehabilitation methods for opioid addiction. Jason Oto Apia. Yuvan Rajadova. Yuvan researched running shoe performances in performance runners, an athlete himself. Four more in these Honors, STEM Academy rewards. Umer Siddiqui. Rohan Singh. Angeline Thomas. Angeline researched through the Chicago Face Database the teenage perception of personality through facial recognition. And last but not least, Ankeeta Ungarala. Ankeeta studied artificial intelligence and the comfort level that various individuals have through that. Round of applause for Ankeeta. Congratulations to these Honors, STEM, and Business Academy students. We hope that their rigorous experience in this AP Capstone program will bring them the research and writing skills that they will need in college and beyond. Congratulations.
The Art Club is advised by Ms. Maria Nomic, and the National Art Honor Society is advised by Ms. Jessica Singer. Jessica Singer is currently on the DECA trip, so I'm here to present these awards. Before I do so, I was asked to read a short blurb on what this first award is for this slide. "The Monroe Township High School Visual Arts Program is extremely proud of 20 students who participated and were selected for publication of the Celebrating Arts Hardbound Anthology. Art pieces were selected for their creativity, originality, self-expression, craftsmanship, and skill. The following students and their artwork were selected among the top 45% of thousands of entries submitted from across the nation." First, Joseph Peters. Lukian Narni. Mischa Donaparthi. Rangana Baraduwaj. Gianna Romeo... Romeo! I'm Italian, I messed it up. I'm going to say it again. Gianna Romeo! Jada Coleman. Puja Sokla. Saninya Patel. Sanandita Krishnadas. Charvika Gopi. Sahil Trivedi. I'm going to get this one right. Salvatore Masala. Amisha Dwan. Danielle Presbolzuski. Elizabeth Oresto. Jenna Ayubi. Lena Arafat. Madison Bell. Sana Kakumanu. Last but not least, Sophia Papaso. And for this slide, this next slide, again, I was asked to read the short blurb. "Three Monroe Township High School students were recognized for their art and writing creativity skills through the Scholastic Art and Writings Awards. Winners are selected by a jury process. Entries were considered for Gold Key, Silver Key, and Honorable Mention. Gold keyed winners were also considered for national awards, which we are proud to say that one of our students achieved. Student works had to exemplify the award's core values of originality, skill, and the emergence of a personal voice or vision, which expresses an authentic perspective and stands out from classroom assignments, as well as social media trends. We are very proud of these students and their accomplishments." First, Joseph Peters, Honorable Mention. Chris Jason, again, Honorable Mention. And special recognition to Sana Kakumanu for not only winning Gold Key, but also awarded the National Silver Medal. Thank you, everyone. I wasn't ready for that. Do you want to do it? Sure. I don't, I can't really see, Zach. I can't see. Okay. Our first award for teacher recognition is for the high school's very own engineering teacher, Ms. Venitha Garshankar, who is right now at a robotics trip in Texas, so we're gonna wish them good luck as well. Our next teacher, again, could not be here tonight, Mr. Chris Thumb. He was awarded a special recognition from the Monroe Township American Legion, so let's hear it for Mr. Chris Thumb. And once again, I'd like to present Dr. Higgins of the Middle School.
Thank you. It's my honor to announce Ms. Danielle Sammett, teacher of ELA in the seventh grade, team leader of Team Quest. Wait for it, wait for it. New Jersey Literacy Champion Award, given by the Daughters of the American Revolution. So, we congratulate Ms. Sammett. I don't see her, so I will tell her tomorrow morning.
If we can just take a moment to give a nice round of applause for all of our recipients. And if I just may let you know that in June, we will have another celebration of recognition. It will be for any additional awards that may not have ended yet due to the timing, as well as our sports and some service, and I think we also may have some technology and so forth, so thank you very much, and you should be very, very proud, because I know that we are. Thank you.
All right. And congratulations, just again, to everybody that we've recognized here this evening. Our students should be extremely proud of their achievements, and of course, thank you to all of our staff and teachers that make those achievements possible here in Monroe Township. So, congratulations again to everybody. The next item on our agenda in our presentations is our public hearing of the 2023-2024 Final Budget. I'll turn it over to Ms. Allen.
So, tonight, we have handouts. Three different handouts for you regarding the budget. And one of them is the Sources of Revenues Combined, which we discussed this at the preliminary budget hearing, and this is just a slightly different format, and it does list all of the different revenues. We have the prior year, this year, and next year, what's budgeted and the differences. So, we have the fund balance, and we show the different categories of fund balance. For the budget, we have general fund operating budget fund balance for $5.4 million. We have some transfers from other funds, which would be the unemployment fund balance, and the Falcon Care and ECE program for $300,000. We show the tax levy for the general fund and the debt service fund, which the general fund is only increased by 2% over the prior year, and the debt service is according to our debt service projects. Revenues, other revenues, we have tuition from Jamesburg, $4.2 million. We have transportation fees, $216,000. And we have miscellaneous revenues, which consist of use of building, interest, just some miscellaneous items. Then we have our state aid, which is $11.8 million, yeah, from the different categories. And we have federal aid, which is basically our restricted special revenue fund. So, our total revenues that we are budgeting for are $149,939, which is only an increase of $995,000 over the prior year. The other handout tonight is the Budget Appropriation Schedule, and you'll see all the different categories. I won't go through them, but the different categories, and it shows if we have new staff, which could just be new hours or something. So, you'll see the differences there by category. And that, you know, that total's the same as the revenues, $149,839, which is an increase of $995,000 over the prior year. And the last handout is the State Aid History, which just, it shows over the last 10 or 12 years, the different categories of state aid, what we have received, and you see how it is, we are getting, you know, a little bit more each year, but we could certainly use more, but we get no equalization aid. We really just get the categorical special aid, special ed aid, and transportation aid, security aid, and debt service aid. So, we have very limited revenue sources that we can rely on. The taxes and the state aid are the biggest items that we can rely on to increase our budget every year, so we have very, very, we're limited to how much we can go up. So, if there are questions, I would, on this.
Mr. Turner?
I noticed that on four categories, the park readiness aid, per pupil growth aid, professional learning community aid, and the host district support aid, from 2018 to 2024, we received nothing on that line item. Why?
I don't even know that they even have it anymore. It was something I think they had in there for a few years. I'm not even sure, I can look it up, but I don't know that that's even out there anymore.
Yeah, because that's a lot of money.
Do you get that in Jamesburg? Yeah, okay.
Why would they eliminate that?
Well, like, the park readiness, that was something, you know, that was a new thing. You know, they might have just had it for some special.
And the per pupil growth aid, I mean, it's bad enough that we don't get any equalization aid at all, ever, when other districts get a lot of it, so, you know, every dime counts, and when they cut four items from us, it's a lot of money.
It is.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, I just had two quick questions, looking at the appropriations.
Yes.
The first is that I noticed there was an increase of $35,000 just for new salaries for athletics, for varsity coaches.
Yes.
I was just wanting to know, is that coaches for a new sport, or are those coaches for additional coaches for current existing sports?
So, those are for, I can just tell you, I have that. For the varsity assistant coaches for boys soccer, girls soccer, cross-country swimming, and winter cheer, and there's a girls' flag football coach in there, too.
All right, thank you. And then, the other question was similar, but the opposite. There was a reduction, it was pretty substantial, I think it was 27% for co-curricular salaries for student activities. I think it was $115,000 reduction, and so I just wanted to know if that can be elaborated, I wasn't sure what it was.
That, I'm gonna say, is really just something that was, we budgeted more than we needed, apparently, in the last budget, so looking at it, we didn't need that much, so we budgeted, we budgeted less for next year.
Okay, so there's no programs or anything that are being cut? It's just that the budget is being modified to represent what's necessary? Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
I just had a comment, Mr. Scrubby, if I may, and I did have a similar question, and Mrs. Allen had it short, but nothing got cut. It was just that we were budgeted, which is a great thing to know. I wanted to just take a minute to thank you for hearing me in the preliminary discussion when I said we needed to put money out for the Apple Garden roof, and I wanted to share it with the public, that I did make that ask because a referendum failed, and we have an urgent need at the Apple Garden School, so they were able to budget $200,000 for roof designing purposes, and the facilities director has filed for ROD grants to help us get some aid to fix the roofs as soon as possible. So, I did want to take a minute to acknowledge that, that that has been factored into this budget, and I appreciate that effort in such a short duration. Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other question? If you wanted to say what the ROD grant is.
Regular operating district.
I actually also had one quick comment, just to bring out the difference in aids, federal aid. We've lost $1.3 million in COVID-related aid, which is not coming back. That did impact our budget, and it's across the board. Everybody's impacted. Thank you.
Does any other board members have any questions, comments? Okay, thank you, Ms. Allen. We will now open it up to the public. We will have a public forum for the budget presentation only. If anybody would like to come to the podium to ask any questions or have any comments regarding the budget only, please do so. Yes. We have four minutes, and please state your name and municipality for the record.
Good evening. Doug Poy from Monroe Township. Regarding the sources of revenue page.
Yes.
I noticed under the fund balance, there's a decrease of about 1 1/3 million. I would appreciate it if someone could elaborate on why there is that reduction compared to the previous year. That's one of the questions. Under the local tax levy, my question is, what will be the impact on property taxes for the individual homeowner? Because that has not been stated this evening, that I heard. So, I'd like to know what that is. And under revenues from state sources, there's an item called extraordinary aid.
Yes.
I noticed that it remains constant over this year and the coming year. I'd just like to know what extraordinary aid is all about. Okay? And I think that would be beneficial to the public. Under budget appropriations, special education, I noticed that we seem to be adding either complete teachers or partial teachers. Has there been a large increase in our special ed population that has caused this, or what has brought about this need? I'd like to know that. And, let's see, under, oh, well, that's been explained. Okay. It's on the second page of the appropriations part of the budget. There's something called student-related services, and then there's another category called student services. I would appreciate if we could have an explanation as to what the difference are in those two categories. And I noticed on the third page of the appropriations, the salaries for the central services is increasing by 5.6%, and the salaries for administrative information technology is increasing by 3 1/4%. And also, on the fourth page, I noticed that the salaries for the principals and vice-principals is increasing by 2.8%. Now, that's current staff, that's not new staff. My question is, why are those increases higher than the amount that basically seems to appear for salaries for all the other staff in the district, which is posted, or which is listed here as being 2 1/2%? So, those are my questions. Thank you.
Ms. Allen, do you want to answer some of those questions?
Sure. Yeah, so, the fund balance that gets appropriated, that comes right from our audit. From, so, from June 30th, we would, the audit would reveal what are excess surpluses and what amount has to get put into the budget, what we have to, what we have to put into the budget as a revenue source. We don't have to use it, but we have to put it in there, and that's, so that is just that calculation. The extraordinary aid amount is, it's something that we apply for every year. We have to fill out an application, it's very detailed. We have, we, we look at all the special ed students, the costs for out of district, or whatever the costs are. If they hit certain amounts, if they have, if they have, basically, if they hit certain thresholds, we can put them on these applications, and we file with the state, and we don't really find out until July of the following year how much we get for this, for this extraordinary aid. So, we don't budget, we can't really know, so we budget, we try to keep it, we try to be conservative and keep it kind of at that level. We've always gotten more, but there always is, you don't know. The state can always lower it, so we are conservative with that amount. That is the extraordinary aid. Then, the, I'll have to find that tax rate. The, okay, you had special ed teachers and powers. Yeah, that's strictly based on what we need, what the student, if we have an increase and we do in special ed students, if we have, you know, say, in autistic class, there are more students coming in, that's based on what we have to, by law, put in the classroom. If we need an extra teacher or an extra power, then we, then we have to do that. So, it's not just because we want to, that we have to, by law. So, that's why you see that in several categories. That's really the main source of new salaries that we are putting into this budget, is the special ed salaries. Okay. The salaries that are in the budget are, most of that, the majority of them are, according to contract, we have different according to contract, we have different groups with different contracts, Teamsters, MTA, central office staff, and the administrators and principals. And we have the non-affiliates. So if we have, if they are in a contract, that is what goes into that budget, that amount. If they are not, as we are not, you know, we can't really discuss the negotiations, but that is what is in there for now. And that is why there's a difference in the different rates. And then, what else? The tax impact, the tax impact which we presented at the last meeting, I think was. So based on an average assessed home value of $331,146, it would be $33.17. It's a one cent increase. Okay? And then I think the only other thing was the student-related services, which would be the child study team. And our PPS people are in there. And then the other, the related, student-related services is the services that we provide for these students that are, for the special education students. Does that answer all your questions? I think I got them all.
Yes. Is there anybody else that would like to speak, have questions?
Good evening.
Good evening, Michelle Arminio, Monroe Township. So my first question is, on the, I guess it's the last page of the budget, of the two-page, or four-page budget, that the 2023-24 budget amount is 1,049,008.39, 7.39. That will be next year's budget, correct?
Correct, yes.
So I know, and I missed the first couple of minutes. There's, there have been changes to the budget. And Ms. Bora mentioned that there are some additions for the roof. What other changes to the budget from the original presentation are there in this current budget that will be voted on tonight?
Yes, so the roof, we increased the architect fee for the roof. And then, and we took out, to make up for that, we took out a BCBA teacher that was going to be a new position. We took that out, along with the benefits. And we took out another position and another category, which we will not be needing, along with the benefits. And we were able to, our technology director was able to get us a really, a reduction in a price on one of his programs, which was pretty big. So that's what made up the two.
So that amounted to about how much?
$200,000. The, what we took, what we put in for the architect fees, we took out from those other accounts. So it's not an increase in the total budget. It was within that.
So it's a difference of 200,000, or a change in 200,000?
A change within, yes.
That's the only change?
But it did not increase, correct.
And we're still negotiating with the teachers, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And when you, could you be a little bit more clear about the assessed total value? It's not $33 for a house for per year, is it $33 per month?
Thirty-three per year.
Increase.
An increase, yes, increase, thank you.
On the assessed value of 300?
Yes.
Okay. So if someone has $600,000 approximately, it'll be double that?
Yep.
Okay, per year?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, Laura Granite. I both work at the high school and live at 25 Canterbury Drive. What is the specific plan to reallocate the funds currently used for the department coordinated positions if they are eliminated? A mass majority of the high school staff believe the elimination of the coordinated position has not received the proper attention and discussion it deserves from this board. Multiple staff members, building administration, and supervisors have voiced their opinions in support of this position and the fear they have about losing a position that has aided in the success of our building and helped develop quality teachers over the course of 30 years. We believe this is money well spent.
Hi, Ms. Granite, how are you?
All right.
Nice to see you. I cannot be detailed because it's personnel, but I am letting you know that as we have evaluated the needs, the coordinators' positions, for those that do not know, are teaching positions where they work as liaisons and they do multiple, multiple jobs, and they do an exceptional job. And that has never been the question. However, many, many of the responsibilities, as I have done the audit, are supervisory in nature. And those supervisory tasks will be taken on by the supervisors as they should be. And we will look to possibly replace, if it's appropriate, a different position that might be a liaison. But respectfully, our coordinators, in general, teach three of the five classes that are needed. They were hired as teachers, they are some of our very best teachers, and we need them back in the classrooms. The financial compensation is hundreds of thousands of dollars due to the no longer having the need for additional staff that we cannot afford in our budget to teach the classes that we would need to teach. So when we look at the position, it is a position that perhaps needs to be rethought out, realigned, examined, to maybe become a content lead position. I can't, like I said, I can't talk specifically on the people. There is never a question that the work that is done by the coordinators is exceptional. There has never been a question that it has assisted in many areas. But from the purview and the examination and working with Dr. Layman, as well as working with Dr. Higgins, those responsibilities, many of them are administrative in nature. And that is what we have supervisors, vice principals, and principals for. So we need to get the teachers that were hired as teachers to teach a full slate of classes.
Okay, if I may, just to speak, as someone who, this is my 19th year teaching here. I absolutely love my job. And I can say that in my personal experience, the support and the assistance that I received from my coordinator, who is not a supervisor, and there's a world of difference between speaking to your colleague, who has a little more authority, than speaking to a supervisor, many things that you might not necessarily, I mean, I tend to not be afraid to speak to anyone, but some people might not feel comfortable bringing. And the coaching and the training and the support that comes from that position, I can say, makes the teaching staff at Monroe Township High School exceptional. And without that, no offense to the supervisors, I like my principals, I like my vice principals, I like my K-12, but I can say there's a definite difference. And I do think that the district will suffer without having that integral liaison position, where they are still foot in the classroom teaching, and they are also still teaching the people that come up and the training. So I would just speak passionately for this to be reconsidered by the board. I truly, as others, believe that this is money well spent for the benefit of our students and our staff. And I ask you to reconsider. Thank you.
Good evening.
My name is Demi News. I'm a graduate of Monroe, and now I teach here in the high school. Just looking at the budget, my question is sort of a follow-up or a confirmation of, I think, something Ms. Ratner asked about the co-curricular budget and the huge difference, the cut of, not cut, but the difference of $115,000. Like, just to confirm, we're not cutting student programs, changing co-curriculars? Kids aren't losing anything in that?
Correct. That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, Jen Wallace, Monroe. I was here to speak on another topic, but once I saw all these teachers here, I felt compelled to come up to speak about the budget. The Monroe students received many wonderful achievements today, and they should be congratulated. But let's not forget, that wouldn't have happened if it wasn't for these amazing teachers also. Teaching through a pandemic, children experiencing learning loss and emotional, social concerns has been challenging for your staff. But they rose above it and succeeded. Based on your budget appropriations, I find it disturbing and a little insulting that you are budgeting only a 2.38% raise for your staff. Not to mention, not to mention you are raising, I'm sorry, not to mention you are budgeting less for their health benefits. That doesn't even out to inflation and to a normal cost of living. The teacher's day does not stop once the school bell ends or rings. They continue. They treat our children like they are their own. The Monroe staff is in the trenches daily. And they shined for all of you and for this town. And they deserve to be respected and rewarded for their hard work. I ask that you please listen to all the teachers speaking before you and during negotiations as they truly know what is best for the Monroe students. As I said before, they're in the trenches, not you. You have no idea what it's like. Thank you.
Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. I have a question about why the water and sewage expense has increased $357,000. It's an 81% increase. I want to know how much the board thinks it's saving by eliminating the department coordinator position, which I also think is important. And I'd also like to express my concern about the decrease in employee benefits that is about $670,000. Teacher salaries in Monroe have been lower than average for years in Middlesex County, especially compared to other large school districts. In the past, some teachers have been willing to accept that in light of the fact that our benefits have been superior to many other school districts that participate in the state benefits plan. So now, we're in a situation where their salaries are lower than average in Middlesex County, and they're going to lose a superior health benefits plan. So what incentive for them is really to stay here? My concern is that the combination, you know, the combination of the lower-than-average salary in addition to an inferior benefits plan will cause a mass exodus of our most talented teaching staff. This will have a very detrimental impact on our student body and on learning. So my question is, what does the board intend to do to improve employee retention? Where is the department coordinator position? Where in the budget is that decrease? Is it in student activities co-curricular? I don't know what line item is it. I don't know how much, how much that savings would be. And finally, the sewer expense, why is a $357,000 increase?
Ms. Allen, do you want to take the sewer increase?
Yes, I do. So that is, I think that's a mis, the title, because it includes that. It also includes other purchase services. So that is not just water and sewer, and I apologize for that. The reason it's so high is because it includes our lease purchase payment. So this year, for next year, rather, there is going to be a big amount. You know, we have a five-year lease purchase payment plan. So this is going to be a bigger payment due next year, and that is why. That is the bulk of it.
Okay, and where is the department coordinator stipends? Where is that in the budget? What line item?
The coordinator stipend?
Yeah, the department coordinators. The elimination of that position, where is it reflected in the budget?
Well, it would be in their, whatever they are, if it's, whatever they fall under, if it's.
So it's spread out, is what you're saying?
I would say it's spread out. If it's, depends on what's specialized, you know, it's spread out.
Okay.
It's not one account that has that.
Okay, I was wondering if the student activities co-curricular, if that's, if that affects TAG, the TAG program? Does that have anything to do with TAG program?
No.
Okay. And then finally, what is the board going to do to improve employee retention in light of this potential benefits move?
That's not a budgeted item. Thank you. Do you have any other questions on the budget?
No.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions on the budget?
Good evening, Tati Melem, Monroe Township. Where is the architect fee in this budget, like, for the Apple Garden School roof replacement?
Okay, that would be on the last page under facilities, it's, under capital outlays, the third category from the bottom.
Yeah.
Facilities, construction services, that's where that would be. That's a part of it, yeah. $200,000 is in that amount.
Okay. So what is the plan for the board to go, like, on vote? Like, to save some money, here is my suggestion. So can you find out that you can put this question by November, along with the general elections or any election that is happening, so that you can save some money on going on a separate election or anything like that? And you can engage any engineer that can work and then get paid in the next budget cycle, which starts from the July 1st. So if you can engage now and then get it listed on this election, so you should have saved some money on the election cycle that you are planning to put it out. So that's all my two cents.
Thank you very much. Does anybody else have any other questions on the budget? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public forum on the budget hearing. Ms. Allen, do you have a resolution to make?
I do. Okay. Be it resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education that the 2023-24 general fund budget be adopted in the amount of $137,479,375, and a general fund local tax levy in the amount of $114,676,549, and a special revenue fund budget in the amount of $1,360,401, and a debt service budget in the amount of $10,999,963, and a debt service local tax levy in the amount of $10,725,988. Whereby the 2023-24 budget totals $149,839,739, and be it further resolved by the Monroe Township Board of Education to transfer $1,263,055 from unassigned fund balance to reserve excess surplus designated for future year's expenditures, thus reducing the 4% of 2021-22 general fund expenditure to its traditional 2% requirement, and an additional $3,165,730 from unassigned fund balance to reserved excess surplus designated for future year's expenditures. Whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has been notified of state aid amounts and where such state aid amounts are for 2023-24, the categorical special education aid is $7,253,233. And for 2023-24, the categorical security aid is $636,791. And for 2023-24, the categorical transportation aid is $3,284,73. And for 2023-24, the debt service aid is $273,0975. And whereas the Monroe Township Board of Education has estimated a state aid amount pursuant to application, and for 2023-24, the estimated extraordinary aid is $397,484. And whereas Policy Number 6471 and NJAC 68:23A-7.3 provides that the Board of Education shall establish in the annual school budget a maximum expenditure amount that may be allotted for travel and expense reimbursement for 2023-24 school year. Now, therefore be resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby is. Now therefore be resolved that the Monroe Township Board of Education hereby establishes the school district travel maximum for the 2023-24 school year at the tentative sum of $165,500, and be it further resolved that the school business administrator shall track and record these costs to ensure that the maximum amount is not exceeded, and be it further resolved that members of the Monroe Township Board of Education authorize and approve a withdrawal from fund balance for unemployment claims in the amount of $100,000, and be it further resolved that the board transfer $300,000 of anticipated retained earnings from the proprietary Falcon Care Fund as a revenue source in the 2023-24 General Fund Budget. And whereas due to the consistent student enrollment growth, facility needs, and other priorities set forth in the board's budget philosophy resolution, the board is budgeting to maximum spending authority. Now therefore let it be resolved that the student superintendent of schools and the business administrator, board secretary file the required documents with the executive county superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Bierman, seconded by Ms. Belko. Does anybody have any questions before we vote? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Allen. We know that you and your staff in the business office have worked tirelessly to get this done and presented to us this evening, so we appreciate you and your entire staff.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your support and everybody that helped to put this budget together. It's been a big, a lot of cooperation here, a lot of people helping. Thank you.
Thank you. Great, the next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Are there any committees wishing to make a report? Ms. Belko?
I'd like to report on the Curriculum Committee. So the Curriculum Committee had one of, I think, our best meetings this month, and we discussed quite a few items that were, that were previously on the agenda and some suggestions and recommendations that the Curriculum Committee had made. The administrators came through and really presented a great piece. The first thing that was presented to us was the Monroe Township High School Clubs. They did something a little different this year, and they had sort of a club rush, and students came up, and then there was a new proposal that they put along electronically. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail, the meeting's already going on. Please watch the video, you can see, you see all the discussion that went on, but we did have three new clubs that the committee is recommending tonight. The Aerospace and Aviation Club Application, their South Asian Student Association Club, Speech and Debate Club, and those three are present, are in tonight's board recommendations from the superintendent to approve. And it was a, it was a great collaboration between the high school advisors, the students who wanted new clubs, and there were, there were almost two or three clubs for each of these three clubs that were created, and they put them together because they were very similar. It was a very, it was a very inspiring account of how we sort of have, are shifting how we do clubs in the high school. So I was very inspired by that. The next thing I was inspired by was that we had a presentation about course offerings and how things are going to change a little bit with the course offerings, and they're looking at things in a different light, and the course offering document is being updated. So Dr. Higgins presented that to the Curriculum Committee, and again, we were inspired by the information, and again, you can see the whole conversation on the, on the video. The Work-Based Learning College Partnerships, Mr. Maraldo did a fabulous presentation about what we're going to do with that and how we're, that we're, the administration is going to move forward with possible early-in, early-out discussion about the way we're doing our work-based learning so that students are getting the maximum benefit from leaving early or coming in late and being able to participate in other activities and taking college courses for college credit and maybe in the future graduate high school with an associate's degree. So that's, that's nice to see. There was some Theater Arts discussion, Dr. Higgins from middle school, and Mr. Maraldo did a presentation about in, putting in a curriculum at the middle school for Theater Arts, and we're excited about that initiative that is coming forward from there. And Dr. Higgins and Dr. Rozell presented Advanced ELA for the middle school, so the middle school getting some attention as far as curriculum and increased availability through some advanced learning for our middle school students to, when they come into the high school. And we also had a presentation on the summer reading, and that is also on the agenda tonight. So please, if you want to hear more information about the Curriculum Committee, it's on our website, go watch it. It was a really good meeting and a culmination of quite a few years, and we did have some good discussion about high school graduation requirements, and that is also out there on the website. So, thank you.
Great, does anybody have any questions? Ms. Bora?
I do not have a question. I have a comment. I want to second Mrs. Belko by saying that this was indeed one of the best curriculum meeting. I would be remiss if I did not take a minute to thank the efforts of Dr. Higgins, Mr. Maraldo, the board, you know, Dr. Lehman, Mrs. Chanley in addressing a very longstanding pain point in the community of our high school students, not enough of them getting AP Comp Sides Principles and AP Comp Sigh A. I was assured in this curriculum meeting that starting this year, 2023-24 school year, most of the students who have applied for this class are going to get that class, and I really think that deserves a round of applause because they've found a creative solution. The demand for these classes are really high. I understand the struggles of the math department and the high school of not being able to accommodate everybody, but we asked and they delivered, and I was truly, I left this room so elated, and I hope the community will send out personal notes of thanks, and I hope the students who get it this year without any friction are going to be appreciative of the creative work that the high school staff did to accommodate. Our classroom sizes have not reduced, our classroom spaces have not increased, they've just gotten very creative with Project Lead the Way being in this mix, and I do want to take a minute to appreciate everybody's effort in that. Thank you so much.
Great. Ms. Ratner?
Yes, I actually, I had one question, and I guess first I'll just do a quick follow-up to what Ms. Bora had said. I agree, I think if students want to take those classes, it's fantastic if we can offer them. I was curious what the changes were. As you know, I tend to watch all the committee meetings, unfortunately with the timing of it this week, coming us through and having the symposium, I was unable, so I apologize for having to ask that. My other question, and again, if this was answered in the meeting, I'm sorry, but I wanted to know with the theater program that was mentioned, is that an elective that's going to be offered to sixth grade, to seventh grade, eighth grade? And if that's off, if that's selected, are those students still able to participate in other performing arts as well?
I'm going to punt to Dr. Lehman, if you don't mind.
Of course. Dr. Lehman?
So the theater elective follows the same principles as the band piece, so you get to do basically one or the other, you know, it's like, you could do two of three. You can't do three of three, you can do two of three. So you can participate in one, you have one foot in one area and one foot in the other. In terms of the creative solution for computer science, we have the Project Lead the Way program, so we have staff members that can facilitate those classes going through a certification course through the Project Lead the Way program. The difference there is students that would be enrolled in that class, we would make sure that they would not need that computer science as their fourth year of math. The other students that would need it as a fourth year of math, and we find that most of the students enrolled in those two courses don't really need it as their fourth year, they would be scheduled in the math class version.
Okay, so just to clarify for the theater, if they choose that, they can do that and one of the two other performing arts electives, but they cannot do any other type of elective, like if they want to do art or technology or anything like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Ms. Bierman?
So concerning the three clubs, I'm not finding that on board action. Is that something where we're going to have to add?
We're going to, we're going to have them in May. We're going to put them in in May. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, so another committee wishing to report? Ms. Fabiano?
I have two committee reports. I'll start with Buildings and Grounds. Sorry. The Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation Committee met on Monday, April 17th. We had a wonderful Eagle Scout presentation from a student at the middle school who would like to create an outdoor classroom space at Applegarth School. We discussed the lease extension for Monroe Commons. We agreed to extend for another year. However, starting in July 2024, our monthly rent will be increasing from around $6,200 to approximately $9,300. Ms. Chanley suggested possibly looking into renovating and utilizing the basement space at the board office, and Mr. Take suggested that we can also begin looking for alternative rental spaces. The committee also discussed donating school buses to the fire district for emergency training. Tonight there is a resolution on the agenda for board approval regarding the donation of three buses. Next, we discussed the trash and recycling bids with compost alternative. Only one company returned a bid, which was for Public Services. The committee discussed the higher cost factor with regard to composting, and Ms. Gerby and Ms. Chanley proposed the idea of asking the Monroe Education Foundation for a grant to help subsidize this initiative. And lastly, the committee discussed the HVAC project at the PAC. Two of the units are in back order, which will delay the completion of the project. The committee agreed to grant an extension for the project completion.
Does anybody have any questions on the EG and TM update?
I just have one question. I apologize I wasn't here for that. The square footage in the basement, is that the same size as the space we're releasing?
The basement of the board office.
So I don't have the exact square footage, but it has been a conversation that I've had with Mr. Take as well as Mr. Alde Riso, who's one of our services professional that we're able to utilize at any time. And one of the areas that are a concern are, right now, is utilized for storage of files. So we have a tremendous amount of space down there with a good eye that Mr. Alde Riso does have. We could take the opportunity, because we do own the building that we're in, whereas we're renters, so the money is just thrown away. But at the same time, as we continue to go digital, we are bound by the 99-year rule, so we have a lot of files to look at and how we continue to digitize, because we do put monies in the, in the budget on a yearly basis. So it's, it's only a possibility, it's a thought, but it has been a conversation that we've already started to have because the rent is going to not double, but increase more than 30%. So it's a great cost.
Forty-six percent.
Forty-six.
Oh, thank you. Forty-six. I didn't want to say double.
Yeah. And we need to get, we need to get this.
So that's something that we've already started, Mr. Alde Riso. Like I said, he's a services professional, so we're able to go just move forward at any time with him. So it's something that we have already started having conversations about.
Does anybody else have any questions? All right, Ms. Fabio, Ms. Bora, yes?
Just to comment to the composting thing, so we, we, as a district, would like to do the pilot of just one school. The cost would be in the ballpark of $10,000 to $15,000, and we're looking for grants and donations. Thank you.
Yes.
I think it's like 14?
Something like that.
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Okay. The next committee report I have is the Legislative Action and Community Engagement Committee, which also met on Monday, April 17th. We had a discussion about the next steps in engaging the community in the referendum process. Mr. Maraldo shared that administration is in the process of creating a survey.
Oh, it's already?
Yes. That was after I typed this, which happened to be sent out today in hopes of getting the community input regarding any future referendums and their involvement in our district. The committee discussed the upcoming community tours that will be taking place throughout the town. The committee also discussed the benefits of sharing events that are currently taking place throughout our school district. Ms. Ratner brought up the website at Burbio, which has the district calendar listed as well as each individual school. Mr. Maraldo explained that he is working on streamlining the way the district calendars are currently handled. We also discussed the Monroe Education Foundation and how we would like to see it revitalize, so to speak. The education foundation is an entity that hopefully can be used to support our teachers and school community through grants that would be used to enhance learning for our students. Both myself and Ms. DePain share the positive, share the positive attributes that we have seen from education foundations in other districts. And lastly, the committee discussed upcoming legislative items. The committee discussed writing a resolution to be voted on by the full board that would be presented to the New Jersey School Board Association Delegate Assembly. The resolution would focus on additional state aid, the state, the school funding task force, and impact fees. The resolution would be presented to the delegate assembly in the fall, and if passed, sent to the state legislature for further consideration. I also just wanted to add, to share with the public, that there is a conflict with our May committee meeting because of all, because all appointed members on the committee will be attending the Middlesex County School Board's Associating, Association meeting that evening. We have been communicating back and forth for nearly a month, asking for a date or time change, so community members will be notified when the meeting will take place.
Mr. DePain?
Yes, with regards to the Monroe Ed Foundation, I spoke up that evening because I had been speaking to a couple of members from the foundation, and I was told, which I shouldn't, I think I was misinterpreted what the person told me, they've already given out $16,000 to $17,000 in grants to our teachers in this district, and they were trying to revitalize the Ed Foundation in order to give out more grants to the teachers. Now, an Ed Foundation, I used to belong to an Ed Foundation in another district, is, raises money only for teachers. Okay, so it is a good foundation that we need people to come out and join and help to revitalize it, bring it back to fruition, and then start raising the money again for the teachers that are here. Well, most of them have left, but some that are here.
It was a discussion of the committee.
I'm sorry, is there something wrong?
No, Ms. Belko was calling a point of order. I said this was part of the committee discussion.
And I was, I was told that that committed for me to look into it. And I did. So if anybody's interested, please come out and give me your name and phone number so we can revitalize this and give as much money out as we can to our teachers here because they deserve it.
Ms. Ratner?
Oh, yeah, just two comments. I know since we had that meeting, I did see that we were sharing our events with the community, so I just wanted to thank the administration for following up on that. I think it's great. I also just had a quick question pertaining to the survey, and I know it just came out, but I saw that it mentions that the responses are limited to two per IP address, which obviously I understand because we don't want people submitting 20 responses that are the same. But the survey itself had asked individuals how they voted. IP, I guess my concern is IP addresses can be potentially tracked to who those individuals are, and I know that one of the, you know, great things about our, our nation is that we can vote without people knowing how we voted. So I wasn't sure if that is something that is being looked at, or if this is, you know, just for the purposes of limiting the, the number of responses for each household.
Ms. Chanley?
Sure. So, no, that is not the purposes of it. We're trying to number the responses from the households so we get an accurate, accurate information back. The reason why we asked that particular question is because we want to see the mail-in ballots versus who actually went to the voting polling places. But as far as the IP addresses, they will not be looked at in that regard. We just are very hopeful that people don't utilize it to provide information that becomes erroneous because it's not consistent to say if you have two people in a household voting 10 times, then the information is, it wouldn't be accurate for survey purposes.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome. Mr. DePain?
Just one more thing. If anybody is interested in the Monroe Ed Foundation, please contact me on the Monroe Ed Board of, Board of Ed emails.
Does any other committees have any other reports? Ms. Bierman?
Thank you. Policy Committee met on Tuesday, April 18th. In March 2023, Strauss ESME released Alert Number 230, triggering review of the items you see on the agenda for first reading. Please view the committee meeting video archive for the policy by policy. Details being incorporated into policies, regulations, and bylaws. Some highlights, initial board member training shifts to be within 90 days from during the first term. So it used to be from any time during your first term, you could take your training. Now it has to be within 90 days. We also decided that all of the listed materials that are recommended in the policy for board members will be accessible to new board members and access points advised during their orientation. There was a checklist in there where you could pick and choose amongst different materials. Use of corporal punishment policies are clarified to include both teaching and non-teaching staff. The local education agency, local education agency is responsible to make sure duplication of benefits concerning federal funds does not occur. The school business administrator is responsible to check the web-based system for award management, also known as SAM, to make sure the district is not employing any entities excluded by the federal government from receiving federal contracts. Concerning school district security, critical incident mapping data is to be provided instead of simply building blueprints, which had been the past standard, and programs have been in place to continuously harvest and deliver this data to law enforcement authorities. When a citizens advisory committee is utilized, the meeting shall be open to the public except when deemed non-permitted by the board. We had a choice there within the policy where we could choose to default to open or default to close. We chose to default to open. On the agenda for abolishment are two policies, well, one policy, one regulation. Policy 9100 is abolished. Policy 9100 is abolished, because there is another policy, 9120, the Public Information Program, and it's a mandated policy and includes similar language. And Regulation 9140, the Citizens Advisory Committee Regulation, is abolished, because the policy for Citizens Advisory Committee 9140 has similar language and information. Also discussed at committee, but no current agenda action, was Policy 5460, which is high school graduation. We discussed the potential for modifications to this policy to modernize needs based on current district structure, and this is being discussed in both curriculum and policy committees. Administration is engaged in these discussions and looking at the policy with an eye toward how to remain within the state requirements, but without stifling the experience of the student, to have a broader range of flexibility and choices that may range from recreational to vocational to higher education opportunities within their high school experience. The committee is excited for administration to come back with recommendations to changes in curriculum and policy to move toward a more individual and specialized opportunity for each child. And that concludes my report for the policy committee.
Does anybody have any questions? No? Okay. Go on to finance.
The Finance Committee also met on Tuesday, April 18th. First item on the agenda was review of a request for proposal for food services management. Michelle Erd joined us at committee. The food services management contract went out for proposal. Only Mets responded. The resolution to accept their proposal is on the agenda for approval. Details include a flat fee of $77,000. The total cost of the contract is $2,702,666.54, and guarantees a financial return of $130,000 for the 2023-2024 school year. Typically, our gains, our gains will outperform their guarantee. The program has been strong and growing. Also on the agenda for approval is an adoption of school lunch prices for the 2023-2024 school year. These prices do represent a 10-cent increase to current prices. The committee recommends both agenda items to the full board for approval. The next item we discussed was Falcon Care and ECE, which is the Early Childhood Enrichment Program. Ms. Corallo joined us at that committee. She indicated that the licensing should be complete prior to September 2023, and the licensing of our facility will allow a path for wider assistance options for families. Both programs are candidates for expansion and enhancement, as the budget allows in the coming years. There have been no increases in tuition for the past four years. The current agenda has a recommendation for increases and changes in the program, which are recommended by the committee to the full board for approval. The Early Childhood Enrichment Program will discontinue part-time options and be a five-day-a-week program for $493 per month. This is a $20 per month increase over the current year. The Falcon Care tuition will increase $20 per month for each of their offered services. So their top-tier services, which would be monthly AM plus extended PM care, five days per week until 6:30 PM, will be $557 per month. Next item was a review of the attorney fees for February 2023. They totaled $22,458. Committee had a discussion concerning pros and cons of in-house versus outsourced legal services. The committee continues to recommend outside legal representation. A handful of districts in the state utilize in-house legal. We were able to find like Newark, Camden, Jersey City. So we're, you know, doing kind of what everybody else is doing there, and we're not seeing any substantial benefit of making any changes. Next item was the monthly review of the bill list. Our initial list is $2,842,827.36. The committee reviewed the list and recommends to the full board for approval, and the anticipated addendum, which is also included in the recommendations from the BA, will be $893,729.72. Next, we had an update on the budget, which we have now passed. So the Finance Committee reviewed the final budget documents and schedules in their modified formats, also the schedule of state aid history. We're continuing the discussion and research concerning a shift to a public vote of the budget for future years to anticipate concerns of how to maintain the district needs within the revenue constraints. A public vote may allow a stretch beyond the 2% tax levy cap. Expenses are increasing consistently and outpacing revenue. We also had an update on audit. The current audit firm has indicated they will be raising prices. The committee supports decisions of the superintendent and the business administrator to go out for a request for proposal on the auditing services needed for the next audit cycle. And that concludes my Finance Committee report.
Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Borah?
I do not have a question. Again, I have a comment. I just wanted to comment on the bill list, share my observation with the public. In this bill list, we had a $10,000 charge, $10,000 charge from the Monroe Township, and it was for the election, for the special election. And when I did speak to Mrs. Allen about it, I was informed that we also have been billed $71,000 by the county for the special election, and on top of that, we were billed $33,000 for printing by the county for the special election. So just the election cost was over $100,000, and if we had gone, if we'd done this during a regular election, it would have not been any cost. So I just think the board should keep this in mind going forward ever. We need to put a question out. It should be done with any regular election in town, because then the cost is covered by somebody else, not by us. We are strapped for money. But I just wanted to share that observation, and thank you, Mrs. Allen, for sharing that number.
Ms. Ratner?
Thank you. Ms. Borah, I agree with your comments. I also just wanted to quickly comment on the ECE portion. I think that is actually a great idea to have it the five days. I think curricularly, it's probably really hard for our ECE teachers, who do a tremendous job. My son is there this year, and they really do learn in that program. And I think while we would all love to have the space to offer full-day kindergarten, we don't, unfortunately. And I think it's probably really hard for them to have kids that are only going two days, three days, and then catch them up. So I definitely, I think Ms. Corallo is very enthusiastic about her job, and so I just wanted to sort of thank that change for being made, because I'm sure it's going to make the jobs of those teachers much easier.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. And we have our Personnel Committee update.
Yes, Personnel. The Personnel Committee met on Monday, April 17th. The board members in attendance were myself, Ms. Spearman, Ms. Scott, Mr. Tofano, and Mrs. Kirby, and administrators in attendance were Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman. We reviewed the current openings in the district. We have 21 vacancies, 15 due to resignations, one due to retirement, and four due to transfers, and one is a new position. This is half the vacancies we had in March, as given how late it is in the year. All leaves will be covered by 17% increment in contractual payment of currently employed staff members. One of the resignations on the agenda tonight is of Mr. Randy Flom, Supervisor of Special Ed. Through the exit survey, the committee was made aware that Mr. Flom has accepted a position with another employer. We wish Mr. Flom a lot of success with his new appointment. I know I will personally miss him, his presence in the curriculum meetings every month. Mrs. Chanley shared that they have 39 applications for this position of Supervisor of Special Ed already, few of which are internal, and we hope to have a recommendation to fill this position by the May Personnel Committee meeting. Also in this meeting, Mrs. Chanley shared her recommendation for the high school football coach. She shared some details from the final rounds of interviews of the candidate and that were recommended to her, and the committee is excited to support her final pick, Mr. Nicholas Isola, who's on the agenda tonight for approval as the head football coach. There were discussions on a few sidebar agreements that were shared with all non-conflicted board members and is on the agenda tonight for approval. And lastly, the committee discussed a resolution for the two new jobs, for the job descriptions for the third time, based on public and board member input, and decided to remove the abolishment of the Supervisor of Athletics position. As it appears on the agenda today, the committee is recommending modification of Supervisor of Instruction Applied Arts and Careers to be Supervisor of Instruction Fine and Performing Arts, Health and Physical Education, and creation of new position of Director of Athletics and Co-Curricular Program. This resolution does not impact the current job description of Supervisor of Athletics, Co-Curricular, Health and Physical Education. And that concludes the Personnel Committee report.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Borah? Okay, seeing none, that ends our committee reports. The next item on the agenda is our public forum for agenda items only. If you would like to come up and address the board, you have four minutes. Please state your name and municipality. Good evening.
Yeah, Richard Gibbons, 415 Schoolhouse Road. I came here tonight because my grandson is starting school in the fall, and I had a successful meeting with my daughter and the Assistant Superintendent regarding the curriculum, specifically the sex ed, and he assured me that there's not much going on from K to 2. However, I have an acquaintance who regularly attends the state board meetings, and she has showed me directly how some of the school districts in the state have adopted some radical curriculum in terms of sex ed. In my view, after seeing it, it's nothing, it's perverted and it's pornographic. Now, I don't want my grandkids exposed to that, so I pray to God that as a board, you don't put any of this material into the curriculum going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, all. My name is Patricia Mazerick. I live at 21 Severn Way. I'm here to speak about the position of Athletic Director. Athletes involve an enormous percentage of students in the committee. Therefore, it is put under a microscope. Talk into the microphone. I've used my gym voice. Athletics involve an enormous percentage of students and the community. Therefore, it is put under a microscope as an extension of the classroom. It teaches many life lessons. These include teamwork, sense of belonging, accomplishment, discipline, respect, physical health benefits, problem-solving, and building character. Mr. Dowling is about all of these qualities and more. Building relationships is evident by the fact that many parents, colleagues, coaches, and students have already spoken about supporting Mr. Dowling as Athletic Director. As Maya Angelou said, "People will forget what you say. People will forget what you did, but will never forget how you made them feel." Mr. Dowling makes people feel good and supportive. That is why so many people have spoken about his work ethic and character. Ms. Chaney and the board, you can also make the community feel good by taking action on their requests to retain Mr. Dowling as Athletic Director. Mr. Dowling has also cultivated relationships on the state and national level. Since any, since each school district has just one AD, it's imperative that an AD know who to reach out, in addition to the district, to determine best practices for high school athletes, and where to find qualified coaches for those sports where there aren't many coaches available. Mr. Dowling's extensive network is evident, as he's been selected to be representative of the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association. It would be difficult, if not impossible, to find a resume that matches his. The AD job takes a tremendous amount of time away from home, including days off, evenings, and weekends. Mr. Dowling's family supports him, and that enables him to freely give the personal time he has to answer calls, texts, whenever needed, in order to support his coaches, athletes, and community, including recreation. Ms. Chaney and the board, do you really know and truly understand Mr. Dowling's character, integrity, passion, and work ethic? Do you understand his why, and how he truly cares about what he does, and more importantly, how he cares about the students? If Mr. Dowling and any other employee does 100 right things, and only one or two things that may, some people, may rub some people the wrong way, do you focus on those like they do on social media, or do you appreciate the good work and cooperative on other issues with mentoring, empathy, and compassion? I am asking, Mrs. Chaney and the board, how can you help this situation? Is there a way that you can meet your objectives, continue to support Mr. Dowling in staff development, and further the district's mission and athletic vision? I see such a way. You can make the new job title Supervisor of Athletics Co-Curricular, not Director, so a principal certification would not be required, and you have Mr. Dowling remain as the Supervisor of Athletics, Co-Curricular, and Monroe Township. In conclusion, by doing so, you would demonstrate to the community that you have listened to the constituents of all, that you support your staff and their development, and ultimately achieve your goal of having flexibility within administration. I have two more lines.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
I only waited three hours. Can I just at least finish?
I'm sorry, no, your time is up. Thank you.
Okay. I hope English teachers aren't here.
And I just want to correct one thing that you said. A principal certificate is not required for the director position.
Okay, well, that's great. Then you have some choices.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Wallace Monroe. I'm going to piggyback off of the next speaker, because I am here to support Mr. Dowling also. First off, I would like to commend the board for finally approving a head football coach. You did what was right for the student athletes. I also want to publicly congratulate Coach Iso for becoming the head coach. In addition, I would also like to commend board member, Mrs., sorry, Ratner? Yes? For the past couple of meetings, for asking the questions that many citizens wanted to hear. So thank you for doing what's right. Mr. Dowling is an AD who speaks at various workshops on the national and local levels, and is also involved in many leadership training courses, in addition to many other things. His resume and accomplishments should speak volumes. He is a quality and upstanding AD. Since Mr. Dowling has been here, he has done nothing but improve our athletic program. Seeing the student athletes at these past few meetings should greatly impact you, as you are here for the students of Monroe. The students gave up their time and have given up their time to support someone who supports them on and off the field. When my son was seriously injured, and we didn't know if he was going to be paralyzed, Mr. Dowling was the first one to call me and continued to call me every day. And when my son returned to school, he continued to reach out to make sure my son was okay, and if there was anything he would need. Not many people would do that, and you need to know that. At the last meeting, Dr. Lehman mentioned that our district is so large that it was about time we had a dedicated full-time AD. In the agenda today, it mentions that this is being done for the efficient operation of the district and the best interest of the district. While I agree that our district is extremely large, and we should have a full-time AD, I also believe that Mr. Dowling should be that person. If he has accomplished so much as a part-time AD, imagine what he could do for this district as a full-time AD. However, what I also found interesting within the comment last meeting was that the board is fine now with making one person in charge of Supervisor of Instruction for Fine and Performing Arts and Health Physical Education. That's a lot for one person to handle, especially since these classes are graduation requirements. And the board has already admitted we are a large district. So how are we, as a board, saying on one hand, we can have a full-time AD, but then, on the other hand, we're going to take one person and combine a supervisor position? As an educator, this clearly does not make any sense. Please know that's a rhetorical question, as I know the answer will be full of semantics. Sorry. I also have another rhetorical question. Has anyone from the board ever even spoken to Mr. Dowling regarding the changes of his position? Or is he learning everything through board minutes and the agenda? Please keep Mr. Dowling. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Sarah Shama, Monroe Township. When you ask a young child what they want to do when you grow up, many of them will tell you a lawyer, a doctor, a fireman, a police officer, an actor, but a lot of them have dreams of becoming a professional athlete. Dreams of being the next Michael Jordan or LeBron James, maybe even Aaron Rodgers, Derek Jeter, Babe Ruth, whoever. But these dreams can only be cultivated by the community in which they live, the opportunities that the adults around them make affordable. that the adults around them make affordable. You see, the decisions that you, as a Board, not only impact your own children, they impact 7,000 children. And although you may not know all 7,000 of these children, they are part of our community, and each of those 7,000 children have a name, a family, and a dream. You should be making decisions that benefit the majority. That is the true role of a public servant. Prior to a few weeks ago, I had never spoken to Mr. Dowling, but serendipitously, I happened to have a conversation with him in late March, right after the Board meeting, when the idea to change his position was initially tabled. I had reached out to him because I wanted to talk to him about why a town of our size does not have sixth-grade sports in the middle school. My seeking him out was in regards to wrestling, as my family is heavily involved in our community for that sport. However, I mentioned that I'm happy to advocate for all sports, as I feel that athletics is an integral part of a child's fabric, that along with academics, is unequivocally important to teaching a child things that they can't learn in the classroom. In our conversation, we brainstormed a few ideas of the possibilities and how our wrestling program would greatly benefit from this, as well as field hockey, and the potential idea of bringing football to the middle school. Mr. Dowling has graciously told me that he will work hard for our community regardless of the temperature revolving around his position within Monroe. I do believe that allowing the Athletic Director to solely focus on athletics would be a huge asset to our community. From what I understand in talking to our community members, no one has impacted our athletics program the way Mr. Dowling has. And as you see the support that the community has for him, you must listen to your constituents and structure the position to give Mr. Dowling the opportunity to make the dreams of our children come true. Please, let's bring the focus back to the children, so the Athletic Director can wholeheartedly do his job without distractions and stress. In addition, I do feel that the Fine Arts Supervisor position and the Physical Education Health position should be satisfied by individuals who are skilled in those areas. I understand the need to make budgetary adjustments, however, it's not advantageous to be penny-wise and pound-foolish. Our Fine Arts and Theater programs carry just as much weight as the Athletics program and deserve the proper support in order to provide our children who are interested in these areas the best opportunities possible. I'm a woman of great pride, and I feel that when being part of a community like ours, I want everyone around me to be the best. Like I mentioned, I love the sport of wrestling, and as much as I want wrestling to thrive and be a competitive and exceptional program when facing its competitors, I want that for the soccer team, football team, track team, theater, band, all the programs that our children are interested in. And you should want that for those 7,000 children as well. When you're in a community that lifts each other up, then we can only do great things. I implore you as public servants to listen to the people you represent and make decisions based on the majority. Remember, you have a direct impact on these children's story, where their future goes, and the trajectory of their lives. Please don't take that lightly.
Thank you.
Regina Giacominie, 27 Bard Drive. I really wasn't planning on speaking tonight, I was just coming in support of the teachers. But the fact that you would continue to try and pass the same reorganizational change to remove Mr. Dowling shows the true character of this Board. Mr. Dowling was a pleasure to work with when I was the MTHS Booster Club President. He stood by us when we were being bullied and attacked by a member. Sorry, I'm a little bit emotional about that. And had to, and had to change our bylaws to protect our Board based upon what parent booster stated. He worked with us on fundraisers and is constantly hands-on with the Booster Club and our student athletes. It's time for you to do what is right instead of trying to fulfill your personal vendettas. And you don't have to make eye contact with me, that's fine, because that shows exactly what this Board is made of.
Good evening. Derek Arts, Monroe Township, New Jersey. Madam President, I'm gonna direct this to you, and then, as you see fit, you could direct it out if you so choose. I'm not sure how I could do a better job than the intelligent, eloquent words of the people that spoke before me. They say everything you need to know about what's taking place regarding Shawn Dowling. I was a high school athlete myself, my, my kids are high school athletes. And I see him for two years now doing a fine job. He's out there every day, not just focused on one sport, but all the sports. Yep, he doesn't have the title right now of Director of Athletics, but he certainly has been acting as a Director of Athletics. Okay? This could not be any simpler of a decision that you have, and I believe with the resolution that goes before the Board tonight, Mrs. Chanley, is, this is gonna be your decision solely, the way I read this resolution. So, I simply ask you, if this is going to be your decision to fulfill the role of Director of Athletics, are you intending on retaining Shawn Dowling in the role of Director of Athletics?
I'm not allowed to discuss any personnel matters, I'm sorry.
See, that's not a fair, that's not a fair answer in front of the community here that you have here, student-athlete community.
I'm gonna allow, I'm gonna allow the attorney to speak on that, because it is the law.
It's usually heard without a mic. Okay. As a matter of law, the Superintendent does not make personnel decisions, she brings recommendations to the Board.
Very good. So, the Board then makes the decision on who is selected for the role?
But it must accord with the Superintendent's recommendation. They can reject the Superintendent's recommendation, but they cannot supplant the Superintendent's recommendation.
Understood, understood. Thank you for that clarification, I do appreciate it. So, is it gonna be your recommendation then, Mrs. Chanley?
No.
Mrs. Chanley, is it gonna be your recommendation then?
Personnel matters cannot be discussed in public. It would be, it would be illegal.
As a taxpayer, as a taxpayer of Monroe Township, whose children are student-athletes that will be affected, and also the other student-athletes that we have before here tonight, plenty of them watching at home, they're keeping their fingers on the pulse of this issue. So, Mrs. Chanley, again, would you recommend that Shawn Dowling be retained into this position? I mean, you hear the support from the community, it couldn't be such a simpler decision, right? He's doing a fine job. If it's a simple decision, which I think it is, and everybody thinks it is, you should be able to say, "I think so."
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have two minutes left.
Oh, I thought you were, I thought you were finished.
I'm not done, I was waiting for a response, but if we're not going to get a response... But it's good that I actually have some other Board members that glanced my way right now, so I appreciate that. Look, at the end of the day, you've heard for three meetings now, inclusive of tonight, the support that you have for this gentleman that's doing an excellent job. It couldn't be more overwhelming, the support that he has. If you don't retain him, trust me, you are creating a major problem for yourselves amongst the voters of Monroe Township, and that's gonna come out in November. Trust me. So, I just hope you do the right thing, because this decision that you're going to make behind closed doors regarding this man, it's his job, it's his livelihood, it's how he supports his family. It's impactful to him, and I hope you have a heart when you think about that, and that you put any personal aside and do the job in the role of the Board, position that you hold, in listening to the members of this tax-paying community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak?
I'm new to this, can I come back up?
No, I'm sorry. Per policy, it's only, you can only come up one time.
There's no rebuttal, based on what other people say?
No. Part of the Board policy is you can only come up one time in each public forum.
Well, I think that should be changed.
Good evening.
Hi, I'm Sarah Aziz, I live in Monroe Township. I'm also here to object to the approval of Item P on the Agenda to create a new position called Supervisor of Instruction, Fine and Performing Arts, Health and Physical Education. This, Health and Physical Education belong under the purview of the Supervisor of Athletics. So, the schools that do have Supervisors of Fine Arts oversee Health and Physical Education, those school districts are pretty small. Most large districts have Health and Physical Education under the purview of the Athletic Supervisor or Athletic Director. I believe the only purpose in creating this role is to follow through a very backhanded effort to remove Shawn Dowling. I believe that the plan is to not renew his contract on May 10th and then hire a different person to be our Athletic Director. And I, I strongly oppose the creation of these two positions, these are redundant and unnecessary positions. And I strongly support the continuation of having Shawn Dowling in charge of our athletic program and having oversight over Health and Physical Education.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Amelia Arts, I'm a student athlete at this school. I'm just coming up here, I've talked at the previous Board meeting for this issue. It's crazy to me that it's still going on and that you guys still wanna pass this, because it's actually ridiculous. The fact that you guys can take away a man's livelihood and try and get him out of a job is unbelievable to me, because he does an amazing job at this school. I saw him two days, two times in school today. One, he came into my, the weight room and was having great conversations with us today. Another time, I saw him out on the sports field. I see him all the time around school, always having conversation with the kids and always caring about what's going on. I previously rolled my ankle, and he's been asking me every day when he sees me, like, "Oh, how's your ankle been?" And he just cares about the environment of the student-athletes at this school and the students in general, whether you're an athlete or not. I believe that you guys should not be trying to take his job away by passing this, this new position that you guys are trying to pass. And I just am here in support of Mr. Dowling, because I think he's an unbelievable Athletic Director, and it would be really sad to see his job get taken away from him. Thank you.
And I would just like to state that there is nothing on the Agenda this evening for Mr. Dowling. His job is not on the Agenda, and passing this Agenda item does not take any job away from any employee. Hello, would you like to address the Board?
Hello, my name is Sheream Devikulun, I'm a sophomore at Monroe Township High School. And I understand that you cannot speak about personal matters, however, just because a Superintendent recommends someone does not mean it's the be-all and all. We teach our kids to be with grace and lose humbly. We, we teach kids to not be bullies and stand up for indifferences. I encourage you to remember these lessons.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum. The next item on our Agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report.
Sorry, I'm a bit late.
I'm sorry, I closed public forum. Excuse me, you're out of order. The next item on the Agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
Thank you. So, we had a tremendous student recognition event today, so congratulations to all our students, all the staff that support them in all their endeavors. I have a few more highlights regarding the high school tonight. So, we're proud, proud to report that the Monroe Township High School Competitive Robotics Team is currently competing, literally as we speak, in the VEX Worlds Robotics Competition in Dallas, Texas. This event features the most competitive and successful robotics teams from across the world and offers our students incredible networking and competitive, competitive opportunities. The team will compete throughout the week and return, return home in a few days. So, if you wanna check out our Facebook page, at some point, we're gonna have a live stream of some of the events they're participating in. Tomorrow night, the Monroe, excuse me, Monroe Township High School ROKAPA Honor Society and the Health Occupations Student of, Students of America, that's HOSA, I'm sure we've seen that abbreviation in some of our notes and things, are proud to host Kind Deeds. It's a nonprofit organization that provides wounded Ukrainian soldiers with prosthetics and rehabilitation here in the United States. Please consider joining us in the High School Commons for a very special presentation and heartfelt conversation with some Ukrainian soldiers and the Kind Deeds organizers. And then finally, this Sunday, our Honors Wind Ensemble from the high school will be performing at the NJMEA State Gala, which is a special performance featuring some top bands in the state of New Jersey. It's a prestigious invitation, it's the first time our district's ever attended and being recognized. So, congratulations to all those students, and again, we saw well over 100 students recognized today for all their accomplishments. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Dr. Lehman? All right, next, we have our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Chanley? Thank you very much. Just trying to get untangled here, but I am tangled. I guess I'll stay tangled. So, I, I would like to echo your sentiment. This evening is a great night, we were able to acknowledge many, many of our children for all different accolades. It's, it's nice to see that children are successful in different areas, whether it be the ability to speak, to create, to be mathematical, engineers, whatever it might be, and I think it's truly wonderful. I have a few things that I would like to comment about. Two events that have taken place, one was mentioned by our student Board member that I had the pleasure to attend, and that was our, I'm gonna call it our first annual, because I hope it does continue. So, I would like to thank Ms. Simone and Ms. Romalto. They are both of our nurses at the middle school, Ms. Romalto is also a head nurse for the, for the district. And they came up with this idea on their own, they said, "Can I do it?" And the answer is always yes, and they went ahead and they created our first-ever health fair at the middle school. It was very exciting to go there, and I was able to print out and keep some of the, some of the events or some of the sessions that they did. They had a very large EMS truck out front where the children were able to participate by coming out and really seeing what it's like for the emergency medical services and what is involved. And they had people that came and spoke on that matter. They had yoga, they had mindfulness, they had mountain martial arts, they had nutrition and balance and proper hand washing and hygiene. They talked about what is poisonous, fitness and exercise, general safety lessons, sun safety, personal empowerment safety, CPR, and of course, check-in and snacks, because everybody likes to check-in, everybody likes to eat. So, I would like to just commend them, I think it was fabulous. I'm also very, very proud that we were able to include our partners in education, Jamesburg. So, Dr. Vilani and I speak about twice a month to talk about the events that we can do to bring the Jamesburg students to become Falcons before they get there. In the past, they were able to accompany the eighth-grade trip, the eighth graders on their trip. This year, that is not something that they're able to do, and because of that, we started to think out of the box, and we invited them, and we were able to provide transportation, and it was truly our pleasure. I wanna thank Ms. McDonald, who made that happen. So, we were able to pick up the kids, bring them, bring them back. Unfortunately, Ms. Vilani, or Dr. Vilani, rather, was at a required workshop, because I know that she's the safety specialist, so she couldn't attend, but Mr. Donahue, the principal, was there as well, as well as his teachers and his nurse. It was a great, great opportunity, and it's always very exciting to have Jamesburg join us, and I hope that we continue that more and more often, because as soon as they get to ninth grade, they're Falcons as well, and we wanna make sure that they feel like they can fly with our Falcons early.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Oh, it's our pleasure, thank you. So, that was one of the major events. Another major meeting that I was able to, to take was to go to meet with the President of Middlesex County College, Mr. Maraldo, who's our current Director of Innovative Programs in, and various different areas, joined me. We met with Mr. Mark McCormick, as well as Dean of the Academic Affairs, Jose Loreno, Linda Scher, and Kimberly Hooper. And the reason why this is important for you as parents and for you as community members is we were very excited to talk about the partnerships that we can create for our children in all different avenues. So, we talked about, they are in the process of putting forth their very first adult pathways to adult living, I guess would be the right term. It does mimic, he said, the E.S.C.N.J. program that they currently have through the Middlesex County Educational Services New Jersey Commission, that's what it stands for. And they also talked about opportunities for our eighth graders, as well as our high school students, and we started to have that conversation about dual enrollment, because we want our children to have every opportunity as far as classes that they can take. We currently partner with Stockton, we partner with Mercer, we partner with Brookdale, and I believe we partner with the University of Delaware. And now, we need to keep it at home. Middlesex is our home, it is, although we might be very southern, and we know that, so a lot of people tend to go to the Brookdale area because of how we're located in Middlesex County, but our Middlesex County College offers a phenomenal reduced tuition rate. And with that being said, we wanna start creating programs. For those of you that have been here long enough, and many of you have, we have the Avid Program, which is advancement via individual determination. I was one of the pilot people that did that, I don't know how many years ago, maybe 13 or 14 years ago, when we first brought it in, and we have it at the middle school, we have it at the high school, and we have the school-wide strategies taught at the elementary schools. And the reason why I bring that up is those are our children who are in the middle. So, we know that are children that are high flyers, and we wanna do everything for our high flyers, so they can graduate, you know, with a two-year degree by the time they leave, we want that for them too. But we also do not wanna forget our special needs population, as well as our children that are in the middle, that we describe sometimes through the Avid Program, because the opportunities are endless. So, I was beyond excited about the partnership. They talked a lot about what we currently call our, you know, pathways to adulthood, and we're looking to partner with them, and we are very excited about conversations was making one of our schools possibly one of their community's schools. They talked about total asynchronous online, they talked about hybrid, they talked about us... us providing an opportunity with early out and late in, as we're talking about during the curriculum committee and then of course, the policy committee. So with all of these changes come opportunities. So I did think it was appropriate to bring that to the board as well as to have a conversation in front of the community. And lastly, I was not able to attend the last board meeting. The last board meeting was supposed to be a special board meeting that was brought in for someone from school boards to come and do a training. And I was at a conference, which I did want to mention. So at that time, I was there and it was Innovative Schools Conference. I had not yet attended that particular one. And I think it's appropriate to comment that the one theme, regardless of whether it was about academics, proactive discipline strategies, brain-based learning, the one theme that seemed to thread throughout all of the sessions was social emotional learning. Traumatic, I don't, I'm going to use the word injury because that's the word they use, traumatic injuries, traumatic experiences, and really how our children have been affected by the COVID pandemic. So even though we are years out at this juncture, our children have been affected in a way that has long-term. So what I really liked about the sessions and I was able to bring back some information that I'm able to share with my team, with my principals, with the director, my Assistant Superintendent, is once again, mental health is number one. Because before we can provide academics, before we can provide instructional strategies, we have to make sure that we have a socially, emotionally healthy child in our midst. We need to just make sure that they feel safe. Safety was another one. I'm very proud to say that we are leaps and bounds ahead of many districts regarding our armed security in all of our schools. But it was a thread, it was a thread, regardless of what session you went to, a lot of them were instructional strategies. What was the number one instructional strategy? Dealing with the SEL first and foremost. So I did think it was a worthwhile conference. And I do think that it was also a positive to see that regardless of whether you live in our state, Florida, Georgia, West Virginia, someone was there from Tennessee, the presenters were from all of the United States, social and emotional learning, mental health is number one. And it's something that we have to remember as we move forward with everything that we do for our children. So I did want to comment about my experience. I did think it was worthwhile. So I thank you very much for allowing me to take the time to discuss those, those matters. Additionally, I am wearing all blue because we should light it up blue. Blue is for our autism awareness and we're very excited about that for the month of April. And we have a lot of activities that are done within the schools and we continue to move through curriculum and of course, adopting policies that we have as much inclusivity as possible. And on that note, I will continue with my report.
Excuse me, can I, can I interrupt it or no? Oh, I'm sorry.
No, not at this point, Kayla. Thank you.
So before I ask for approvals, I'd like to note three retirements. The first retirement is Erica Friedman. She serves as our Transitional Specialist of working with students in the high school and getting them into the workforce. She has been here 20-plus years. I have had the pleasure of meeting her and working with her on occasion when I was the principal of the middle school, so we wish her well on her newest journey. The second retirement is Mr. Matthew Gorham, who has been here 36 and a half years. That is beyond, beyond an accomplishment. I've had the pleasure of being Mr. Gorham's principal and he is a gentleman's gentleman who is very well-liked by the students, who brings a lovely, exciting way of teaching history. He's currently a sixth-grade teacher in the middle school. He was a teacher at Woodland, I believe, under, were you there with him? Yep, under Dr. Lehman. And he is leading us to be excited about his, his retirement. And he's done really a fabulous job. And last but not least, we have Patricia Manciniak, 44 years. Head custodian at Brookside, excuse me, at Barclay, I apologize, Barclay Elementary School, 44 years. There are no words. So what she has done for our children, every time she's cleaned and gotten that classroom ready every day for the kids, that is pretty amazing. Forty-four years is, is really an accomplishment. So I wish them all well on their newest endeavor in retirement. On that note, under a 10-member vote, it is recommended to the board approve the attached personnel items A through T.
Make a motion?
Motion.
Second. Any questions? Ms. Fabiano?
I have a question, an item R, numbers one and two. It says resignation replacement, so the teacher who had this stipend resigned.
Ms. Klein, Retorno Divi.
She resigned from the particular stipend position because she's currently on leave.
Thank you. I was looking at her.
I just had a quick comment. I noticed a name on item T and I just wanted to give a shout out. I see Ms. Joanne Zoslin as a school volunteer. I just wanted to give her a shout out because she's been a teacher at Barclay Brook for years and an amazing teacher as such, second-grade teacher. And I admire her passion and energy to keep coming back to the school, even to volunteer right now. So I just wanted to kind of talk about it.
Does anybody have any other questions for Ms. Chanley? Okay, we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes, Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on, it is recommended, under a nine-member vote, to approve the attached personnel items U through AM.
Can we get a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Does anyone have any questions? All right, may we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes. Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Under Board Action, for a 10-member vote, it is recommended to the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through P.
Can we get a motion?
Second. Oh, motion.
Does anyone have any questions?
I just have a question pertaining to the staff development, actually. I noticed that both for the 10-member vote as well as additionally for the nine-member vote, it's the same conference for AVID. And I fully support the AVID program. I know it does fantastic things for the students. I did see that the cost itself is, is rather high. I think it's approximately $20,000 for the staff we're sending. So I was wondering if there was ever the research done to see if those trainings could possibly be brought to our district because then it might be able to be offered to additional staff members and would obviously save on the transportation costs.
You want to take it?
Sure.
So specifically with this training, this is a yearly kind of summer training that they do. It is located regionally in the United States. The past two or three years, ever since COVID, it's been done virtually. Previous to that, it was Philadelphia. They no longer offer, offer it in Philadelphia and many of these staff members have required trainings to maintain their ability to facilitate these courses. And that's related to, it's an operational cost related to running AVID. Previous to the Philadelphia location, it was again, other Georgia, Florida, different, different locations. So we've had a consistent budget line item for this. We've been under the past few years because of COVID. This year, we're still under, but it's more expensive than historically the past couple of years, just related to the location of the, the trainings. Yep.
Does anybody else have any other questions? All right, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, no to item P.
To item P?
P.
Okay. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
No on item SF, excuse me. Yes on all others.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's all right, I was coughing during my first call, so I don't, I don't blame you. I have to recuse on, for letter G, letters M, oh, I'm sorry, L and M. And then I need to recuse on, abstain on letter P for letters A, C, and D, and vote no on letter B.
Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
For Board Action, nine-member vote, it is recommended to the board approve the attached Board Action Items Q through W.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Does anybody have any questions? No? All right, may we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
I'm yes on everything, but for you, I am no on the second and third. So yes for the first number and no for the second and the third.
Okay. Ms. Belko?
Yes on all except no to you.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
No on item U, yes on all others.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes.
Thank you.
That concludes the Superintendent's Report. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, can we have your Business Administrator's Report, please?
Yes. The Action Items A through R be approved by consent roll call for the 10-member vote.
Motion. Second.
Are there any questions?
I just had a, a quick comment. I just wanted to thank the CDM Smith for their donation to their Robotics Club.
Thank you. Okay, can we have a roll call? Ms. Fabiano?
Yes to all, recuse on A1.
Ms. Bora?
Yes to all, recuse for myself on item O.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on A1. Also recuse for the, the bill list pertaining to Mr. Ratner. And then also recuse for myself on the travel expenditure for the workshop, which is letter O, sorry.
Ms. DePain?
Yes, and I recuse myself, letter O, for the state convention.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes, recuse on A1 and recuse on myself on letter O.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
It is recommended that Board Action Items S through T be approved by consent roll call for a nine-member vote.
Motion. Second.
Are there any questions? May we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes your report. The next item is the Board President's Report. Just have a short report this evening. I know it's getting late. I want to wish a very happy Administrative Professionals Day to everyone. Our administrative professionals across the district are so vital to the operations and function of, of our district on a day-to-day basis. Again, I want to say congratulations to all of our students who are honored here this evening. Their true, their achievements are truly remarkable and should be celebrated. This week, I attended the New Jersey School Board's Spring Symposium along with many of my fellow board members. New Jersey School Boards is a great resource for districts and their sessions were very informative. Would like to just say, in regards to our contract negotiations with the MTEA, we are bound by ground rules where we cannot discuss things publicly, but I would like to say the Board Negotiations Committee continues to be willing to work toward a settlement with the MTEA. And I remain hopeful that the Board and the MTA can reach an agreement that both parties will be very happy with. And that concludes my report. The next item on our agenda is other board business. Does anybody have any? Ms. Belko?
Yeah, I just wanted to say congratulations again to all of our students tonight. It's always my pleasure, it's one of the most pleasurable things here, is to watch student achievement and to hear all the things. And I think Azia really gave us a good report this evening. She was really on fire. So I think that that's really great. I also wanted to talk about one of our retirees tonight, Mrs. Erica Friedman. She's been with the district for many, many years and as, as the Transition Coordinator, she has been invaluable to many people. I hope that at some point, we, we get that knowledge that is in her head transferred to at least one person or two people because she has a wealth of knowledge in her head that about, no matter how much research, as a parent, as a teacher, you can do, it's experience and years of working in this transition world, which as a, as a special needs parent, and I don't want to get personal, but you live in it daily. You don't, transition is not something that just happens at one time. Transition happens from kindergarten to first grade. Transition happens from the, you know, lower elementary to the upper elementary to the middle school, from the, as soon as they start middle school, you're worrying about their transition to high school. They start high school, you're worrying about their transition to adulthood. And now that they're a year away from going out into the world, you are panicking. And Mrs. Friedman has always been someone who has been kind, she has information, she's willing to share that information, she's always willing to talk, and I'm going to have to pick her brain now for the next two months because I'm truly going to miss her next year when I'm making that really big thing. And she's been an unbelievable asset to this district, so I applaud her and I thank her for everything that she's brought to this district and we are truly going to miss her.
Thank you. Ms. Ratner?
Yes, so I just wanted to quickly mention a couple of the events that I had the pleasure of attending. I had went to the Eco Fair that was held at the high school last week. There were high school students who all different, shared their different experiments. And honestly, what was really great is that they presented in a way where younger students were excited about learning it. So like, there was exhibit on mosquitoes, which my son ran away from. But you know, otherwise, like, it was very exciting to see that. I also was able to attend the ECE Art Fair, which, you know, we had spoken about ECE earlier, they do a fantastic job. You know, I was being told about not only the different artists, but the different styles and their famous works. So, you know, great job to Ms. Corallo and, and her staff there. I was able to attend Elementary Honors Band, which was held all the way in Hillsborough. And so I just want to, you know, congratulate the students that were there as well as the staff members who gave up their Saturday in order to sponsor those students. And then finally, I know Ms. Chanley sort of already highlighted it, but I was able to attend the middle school health fair yesterday. It was actually impressive timing, Ms. Bora and I pretty much walked in simultaneously after being in a symposium together simultaneously. But you know, to the nurses that put that together, I thought it was fantastic. But, you know, to the nurses that put that together, I thought it was fantastic. I loved seeing the mindfulness that was being taught. There was the yoga seaport. You mentioned them. I also loved the hydration station with the water infusion. I thought that was great. Yeah, I definitely took a couple of those cups. It was fantastic. And I think it was great that they created that partnership with Penn Medicine in order to do that. And hopefully, that's something we can continue to build on. And then finally, I also just wanted to mention the education symposium that we were able to attend for New Jersey School Board. You know, I know several of us attended. There were two sessions that I went to that I thought were of note. One was about bond referendums, and you know, there were some interesting ideas that were presented. And then the other one was the legislative panel, which I know several of us were in attendance with. And quite frankly, I was disappointed with the things I was hearing. I felt that the people that were speaking are disconnected from what's happening. They said that they believe that the funding formula is not broken. And honestly, if that's the case and what they truly think, then they're not listening. They're not paying attention. And I think that regardless of the differences that are at this table, that is something we can all agree on. We are not getting what we should be from the state. So I actually, after attending that, proposed to Ms. Fabiano as the chair for legislative action that maybe we look into whether it's as a committee or as a board, I'm not sure, but testifying at maybe one of the legislative budget hearings, so that it's not just a couple of legislators that are hearing us, but all of them. And ultimately, we can only do so much. We can't force their hand. But I think we have to try and do everything we can to get what we deserve. And then, I lied. There was one more thing. This is quick. This week is National Student, I want to end on a high note. So it's National Student Leadership Week. Bless you. And I just wanted to, you know, say, as we saw tonight, we have so many fantastic leaders, student leaders in our district. So I just wanted to acknowledge them, as well as the teachers and the staff that helped them grow. Thank you.
I attended the Spring Symposium also. To piggyback on Ms. Chanley, I watched the CEL presentation by Vincent DeLucia, who was, used to be the mayor of South Brunswick, and he worked in South Brunswick and North Brunswick. He's a resident educator. They created a position for him. He gave an excellent presentation on that from School Boards Association. So you might, you might want to get in contact with them and have it brought in if you want to continue it because I think that's a wonderful idea, especially with the mental health issues. And what was the other one I went to? I went to the bond referendum one, too. And the legislative educators, the one lady actually came right out and said, "I know you're all going to say that fair funding is the top concern, but our top concern is safety." And I said, "Well, you know, safety is everybody's concern for the children, for the teachers, whoever's working in your building. But fair funding is also a big concern for a lot of the districts and positions that we're in." So I didn't like her from the beginning. I think I muted her halfway through. But it was a great symposium, and it was worth the time to sit there. And I got a load of wash-in in between when she talked, but I thought it was great. And when you said CEL, and what was the other thing you mentioned? You mentioned two things tonight, CEL and...
Brain-based learning?
No. There was something else. Oh, my God.
SEL, brain-based, oh, also, they talked a lot about, I'm sorry. They talked a lot about, all the different sessions had a lot of input regarding trauma. And then they talked about the pandemic having trauma.
Mental health and trauma was also part of his CEL presentation and a part of a couple others. So I think that's something we need to bring here from School Boards Association and invite the parents, invite everybody to come. Because like you're saying, everybody has to realize now with, after COVID and after everything's happened to our children. My children are older, but I have grandchildren that are eight, six, eight, six, four, two, and nine months. And I want to see them not have to go through mental health issues in their lives. And unfortunately, that's a big, major concern. So I think that's something we need to give a presentation to everybody. Open up the auditorium. Have any come here and talk and see if we can, that's what we need to do for people to recognize and be present in our district, is to give them things like that to come, listen to, and take some things away, to bring home to an organization they belong to, a Girl Scout, a Boy Scout, things like that. I don't want to take up any more time, but it was a great symposium.
It was, absolutely. And just a comment about the fair funding. It has been something that we have been, as a board, concerned about, fighting for community-wide for at least the last 12 to 15 years. And you're absolutely right, Ms. Ratner. It was very disappointing to hear them say that yesterday. I was on that as well. But for them and for their towns, it's not because they're getting the funding, and that's the problem. And I brought this up after we came back in October from the New Jersey School Boards Convention, where you were there as well in that legislative panel, and they laughed about the task force. And that was the one thing that they did say at that session yesterday at the Spring Symposium, was if anything was going to happen, they need to form the task force. So I think as a board, we should be writing letters to the, I think it's in the, it passed in the Senate, and it's in the...
In the Assembly.
In the Assembly. That's where we really need to focus of getting that passed because once that gets passed, the task force will be created. And then only then will they actually take action to look at the formula and change it.
If I can, I also just wanted, Ms. Bora and I had the same situation where we were in it, and then when we got to the school, we got disconnected. I don't know if they answered the questions in that legislative panel, but I also had asked about impact fees. And I, like someone had shared with me that they had said you should talk to your town about them, but my understanding is that it's a state law that they cannot be assessed. So I don't know, you know, obviously, it would be great to talk to the town about, you know, plenty of things, but I don't really, I think they have to realize that that hasn't be a legislative action either. They have to allow that. If the developers are going to come in here and build, then they need to help, you know, create the infrastructure to support it. So I wasn't sure if they ended up commenting on it, but...
They did. I did listen to that part before I went to the middle school. By the way, the health fair was beautiful, Penn Medicine, the staff was really into it, and I heard they were doing it for six hours nonstop. So kudos to them. The legislative plan panel, and I had to second Ms. Ratner on that, was very disappointing. They did not think fair funding formula was a problem. They, we both asked the same question about the task force and kind of swept under the rug again. It is not a problem for majority of schools. It is a problem for very few schools. And Monroe is actually the most impacted, in my opinion, and it is our problem to solve. We have to go there and we have to make, keep continuing to make noise. One of the things that they said about the task force was that, oh, well, the NJSPBA is, you know, supportive of it, but they're not doing anything. They're just sitting on it. The impact fees thing, they did say, go to the mayor, but then both me and Kate observed that one of the panelists was on the opposite side of every discussion. And when it came to impact fees, he was on the side of the mayor of the town saying, well, they have their own issues with this, so we can't really force their hands on it. So I didn't feel like he was advocating for the school boards, but I guess everybody, every panelist has a viewpoint on that. It was, it was kind of ironic that a lot of board members on that panel with us were complaining about, there were S2 schools that lost $30 million in aid this year, which was given back to them. And they were complaining about that, and I said, "We've never seen that kind of aid." So can we bring the focus back on schools that have no aid like that and are 7,000, you know, students strong? So I did not think the legislative panel was my best part of the day yesterday, but besides that, the other sessions were good. It was time well spent. Always a lot to learn from NJSPBA and, you know, other board members. So I'm thankful for the opportunity to do this.
And just really quick, it was that the S2 provided, they gave back funding. Ultimately, they didn't have to take in the first aid, but what they said at the panel, I forget who it was. There was one person who said it was done because it's a campaign year. So by giving back two-thirds of the funding, it makes those districts look good. And I, I don't know if I wrote in the comments or in my Q and A area because it was separate, but I said, "Well, what about the districts that don't have anything to get back?"
Mr. Tofano?
Yes, I just want to let you know, I, this is my fourth year on the board now, and every year, we have the same conversation. And it's been going on way before I was a board member. I know that every year, we all unite behind this issue, and we invite our representatives here. And somehow, they never have time to come to a Board of Ed meeting, but they come to every other event that they can gain votes on. I just, I find it very frustrating that if you look at all the results, the election results, Monroe township is significantly underfunded, yet the residents here vote unanimously for the same representative that are not funding us properly. I wish somebody would explain that to me, but nobody seems to be able to do so. I would also like to see your committee invite her here again so that maybe the residents here can see that we've been ignored for year after year after year. It's just, it's really frustrating. People say it's not political, but it is political. The people that can give us this funding that our children deserve, that our teachers deserve, are not doing it. They're ignoring us because they don't need to do anything about it. They keep getting elected. So I think if I was a teacher and I wanted something better for myself, me personally as a teacher, I would be on the steps of Trenton with my signs and my red shirts, and I would be protesting those same people that are not funding our district properly. That's just me. That's what we should do.
Ms. Skirby? I can assure you, Mr. Tofano, and everybody here from being on a board previously, that it's over 25 years that districts like us and Woodbridge and Edison and North Brunswick and all the surrounding ones that are not getting their money have not gotten their money for at least 25 years. We tried to get a group of those, you can't go as Monroe. You have to go as, you've got to get representatives from all these districts that have lost money over the years, go together as a group, and then approach them and tell them, "We're not here just as Monroe. We have a whole group of people that are falling into the same category." We tried. Years and years ago, we tried. It failed. I can tell you, not for trying really hard. It can be done again. We can try really hard. Monroe can be the starting point of getting the rest of these districts together to complain about this fair funding. I have to agree with you. I know you brought it up in your campaign, and a lot of people talk about it. But sometimes you get sick and tired of being pushed to the side and not getting what's rightfully yours for your district and for the teachers and for the children, for God's sake. I mean, so maybe Monroe can be number one and get the rest of them on board. I don't know how Jamesburg is with theirs, Michelle.
We get, you know, we get a decent amount of funding, but we still don't get our fair share.
You don't get yours either. So then it's a lot of Middlesex County we can get together that don't get their fair share and go in force.
But to put it in perspective, Jamesburg gets the same dollar amount.
Right.
Ironically, as Monroe gets, even though the percentage of what that represents.
But you have to go, you have to go in force. You just can't go as Monroe. They're not going to pay attention to you. We tried.
And we need to organize it. Let's do it.
If you go based on what the formula is, we are still not getting the amount of funding that we are supposed to.
Right. So you're still realizing benefits under us.
Right. Not fully funded.
The formula is not fully funded, but the formula also has inherent flaws in it.
And equalization aid as well.
That's exactly right. Because all those other districts get...
That's why Ms. Allen has to go crazy with the budget because she's trying to get an under-2% cap, which is wonderful, but the poor woman has probably gone nuts the last couple of weeks trying to do that. I mean, when that was put in place years ago, you know, it was great, but sometimes when you don't have the funding, it's rough. So I applaud you for what you've done tonight.
Absolutely. Does anyone else have any other board business? Ms. Beerman?
And one of the items on that, you know, we keep chasing information and leads from anyone who will speak to us. And it was the county education commissioner had said, "Oh, you know, Woodbridge is doing wonderful. They're thrilled. They've managed a way around impact fee laws that they've been able to use the pilot program, which is this payment in lieu of taxes." And we were like, "Ooh, this is amazing." And they suggested to us, you know, this was a path, and we marched it right to the town to see how we could, you know, benefit from this and partner on it. And it turns out legally that it's a certain kind of development that isn't something that we develop in Monroe. So we're not able, you know, to gather funds from that avenue either. So less and less towns, you know, some of them are figuring out ways around this, like Woodbridge. They're getting referendums passed. They're benefiting from pilot funds. Everything's going hunky-dory. They have amazing, you know, synergy between the town and the Board of Education. You know, and we're always kind of feel like we're out here flapping. Yeah.
Does anyone else have...
I just wanted to point out that there is a Senate bill that was introduced last March about impact fees, and it's still sitting in committee.
Talked about it at the last place meeting.
And that's where it will sit, too.
I just looked it up again. I figured I'd check and see if it moved.
Same spot.
A year later, and it still hasn't moved, so...
And the legislative sessions are going on now, so it's going to be hard to get anybody to come and speak. Like, I know who you want to come, but the sessions are on now, but we can try.
Never hurts to try.
We can try. We can go ahead.
Does anyone have any other board business? Okay, seeing that, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is our public forum. Anyone wishing to speak to the public, I mean, to the board, come up. You have four minutes. Please state your name and your municipality. Good evening. Can you...
Can you speak closer to the mic, please?
Yeah, I'm close. Is it good?
Yes.
Mike, simple question is like, are there any changes coming to the middle school tag program?
Yes, and actually, I'll be happy to give you an answer, and you absolutely should watch our curriculum meeting because it was discussed in more detail, which will be helpful, but I'll be happy to summarize it. So the way Talented and Gifted has worked here, and I've been here for 20 years, it's always been an after-school program, with the exception of, although we call it a tag program in math, math has an accelerated component during the school day. ELA, English Language Arts, is supposed to have the same component during the school day. It is state-required that that program is to occur during the school day, and for many, many years, we have not done that. So we are removing the after-school tag, which is club-oriented as far as the children that are able to matriculate in it. And we are creating an advanced ELA program during the school day that will mirror what we do for the mathematics during the school day, and that is the requirement. We will, however, make sure to not lose the synergy that has happened, which was one of the things that I created with my VPs. We called it Humanities and STEM. We are going to keep the club concept of it for after-school for those children that would like to participate. But we're very excited about this opportunity because by doing this, all the parents that I used to talk to on the phone because they didn't know what to do because their child made both tags, STEM and Humanities, but they wanted to finally go out for a sport in the seventh grade. They wanted to finally do a club, expand their horizons. Now that child will be able to benefit by having the advanced ELA during the school day as they have the advanced math program, and then have opportunities after school. So that is correct.
Thank you. So I missed out the curriculum meeting, but this month, the meetings are posted very delayed. The Zoom meetings, the recordings are posted delayed. So that's why I missed out. I couldn't get... So I have another question. Like, we talked about like the math lowering the requirement, like from 20 credits to 15 credits or something like that. But at the same time, like our neighboring districts, a lot of districts, they are giving an opportunity to skip a level from, when kids are going from eighth to ninth grade and ninth to 10th grade. But our school is not allowing anybody from, skip any level from eighth to ninth grade. So can the administration and curriculum committee can look into that?
Okay, so let me just understand what you're asking. One of the things I want to state, and also, and I do apologize, I did speak with Mr. Feldman, and he was here earlier. We did have a delay. Some of the board members did bring that to my attention. Fortunately, it doesn't happen that often. But I do want to apologize. So I was contacting him even in the late hours, and then he finally said it was supposed to be up by the morning, and there was a problem. So I do apologize because I know that many of the, many of the community like to watch that. What we, and we want to be very specific. So when we're looking at graduation requirements, what we're doing is going, our goal is to go with the state requirement. It doesn't mean that we will not afford the opportunity for those children that want to take fourth-year math.
This is, this is, I'm not saying like...
But I'm going to answer your question.
These two are not related, but when we are like giving that opportunity, we want to give the opportunity to the top-tier kids that who want to skip a level or do a summer course, and then they can skip like from Algebra II to Geometry or something like that. They can do it from eighth to ninth grade, which is not allowed now in our high school.
Okay, so I don't know about the skipping. We could definitely look into that, but I will...
Skipping in the sense like, they can take a summer course. They can take a test at the beginning of the school year so that they can go into the next course.
I was going to say, we do that.
We do that, but from ninth to 10th and 10th to 11th, but not from eighth to ninth.
No. But that doesn't mean it can't be a conversation that we're having as we're having all these other conversations.
Yes. That's what the point is. Like, can you add it to your conversation so that...
We can absolutely add it to our conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Jennifer Wallace, Monroe. I know you were talking about state aid, and I believe we were comparing Edison or talking about Edison, Woodbridge, the whole Middlesex County getting together. And I guess I'm just a little confused because Edison is a smaller district relatively school-wise, school, number-wise for your high school than we are. We do have two high schools, but Edison...
Excuse me. I want to remind my board members.
Edison was able to get for next school year...
We don't interact with the public during public forum. I'm sorry. Just want to remind my board members that we should not be answering back the...
Okay, but I...
Well, we shouldn't be doing that.
I'm at three minutes, and I wasn't, I just started, but I wasn't three minutes. That the Edison is now getting for 2024 almost $73 million for state aid, which was an increase of 54%. So I'm just saying that maybe it's something we need to look into that we're missing. That's all I'm saying, like on how to do it. Because yes, Edison is two schools, but your numbers far exceed Edison in both those schools. That was my first comment. My second is that, going back to Mr. Dowling. As parents, we teach our kids to win humbly and lose with grace. We teach our kids not to be bullies or... We teach our kids not to be bullies or be vindictive and stand up for injustices. Our Monroe student athletes have shown that during the past meetings and that should speak volumes to the board. Students, when I ran over my four minutes, were even willing to come up and speak on my behalf for Mr. Dowling. That should say something to all of you. Unfortunately, I do think many of you have lost or forgotten the lessons that I just mentioned. I respectfully ask the board that you look into the mirror and ask yourself if you are using your individual voices and doing what is best for the interests of the kids or are you being manipulated by semantics? Please, you were elected for the student athletes and for the citizens of Monroe. Do what is best. These kids have come out. You can ignore me all you want and you can ignore the parents who came up here, but what you should not ignore are the kids who have continually sat in these seats to support an adult. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Azizman of Township. I would like to speak about how disappointed I am in the post-referendum survey that was released late this afternoon. This survey did not seem interested in finding out why people voted against the referendum. It would have been good if the survey had asked our residents do, if they support the replacement of Applegar School, if they want to build a new school, if they think the new school should be built behind Applegar or whether it should be built on the Gulf Range property. There was no questions about what, you know, what people do want to see in a referendum to address our overcrowding situation, or even if they realize how severe the overcrowding situation is. Instead, the referendum seemed more designed to find better ways to market the same exact plan they put out the first time. And my concern is that, you know, if the, if the board puts out the same, same referendum a second time, it's going to fail. And each referendum costs about $100,000 to, to hold unless it's held in the general, in, in the November election period. So I would ask that the board revise the survey and also, you know, most, most other districts that do community-wide surveys, they hire, they use survey companies like Survey Planet or Survey Pal or Survey Monkey or some, some service like that that allows them to better quantify the results and report them. And so, you know, we had a superintendent's search survey early, last year, and the results were not reported until the superintendent was chosen. So I have a concern that, you know, when this survey, the results are collected, you know, will it be shared? Will, will the results of this survey be shared? Are there any plans to amend the survey? Or is this the only survey you're putting out?
The survey that is out is the survey that the district is conducting.
Will the results be shared?
Of course they will.
Will they be shared before the referendum, the next referendum is put out?
Do you have any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? All right, seeing none, we will close the public forum. Next item on our agenda is our closed session resolution. We do need to go back into closed session. So be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby goes into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 NJSA 10 colon 4 dash 6 through 10 colon 4 dash 21 to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, and bullying, matters protected by attorney-client privilege, confidential personnel matters with the understanding that only employees who have already received a rice notice will be discussed, collective negotiations. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, we may be in closed session for at least an hour, hour and a half. Thank you. Okay, we're back in the public session. The next item on the agenda is public forum for closed session items only. Is there anybody that would like to come and speak? I'm sorry. Seeing none, we'll close the public forum.